We are live. Welcome. Buenas tardes. Good afternoon. We are reconvening the Salem Kaiser School Board meeting for a public school board meeting today. And I'd like to just start off with this diverse welcome message to everybody. Buenas tardes. Good afternoon. Welcome y bienvenidos to the Salem Kaiser School Board District 24J, meeting where we will strive to be inclusive, respectful, and welcoming to our students, staff, educators, administrators, board members, and all community members. Furthermore, I want to welcome people of all genders, people of African descent, Black, African American, Asian descent, Arab descent, European descent, those who identify as Hispanic, Latinx, peoples indigenous to this land, and people of mixed, multiple descents. To the languages spoken in our communities are welcome: Spanish, English, indigenous languages, sign language, Chukis, Somali, Russian, Chinese, Vietnamese, and many more. For people with disabilities, visible or invisible, gay, lesbian, bisexual, heterosexual, pansexual, queer, or others for whom none of the labels fit, survivors, your emotions: joy and bliss, grief, rage, indignation, contentment, disappointment, your families, genetic and otherwise, our elders, those here in this room, in our lives, and those who passed away. Yes, and finally, I'd like to welcome the ancestors who lived in this land where we are now. Welcome the spirits of the Saniam, Kalapuya, Solets, Gran Ron, and Achyuk, the natives who lived in this area before the Europeans came. I'd like to acknowledge them and invite their spirits to this place. Welcome. Thank you. Again, we're not reading a landing acknowledgement at this time. We're still in the process of consulting with our Confederate tribes of Gran Ron and Solets. And if you all like to stand up now and join me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To a public which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I like that enthusiasm. Today, there are no agenda modifications, so we'll move into public comment at this portion of the meeting. Let know that the order you are talking, the two agenda items, the public comment proposal and the safe welcome school resolutions first, and that we are trying to keep public comment to 90 minutes, and we'll accommodate as best as we can. This is a reminder to all the speakers as you get called up. You'll have three minutes to comment, so we can try to get as many voices to participate, with an additional three minutes for translation if needed. Speakers are asked to state their full name first and last, and city of residence. And Alice will be running the clock for us. She will be letting me notify me when that time is up, and I'll ask, if you continue to speak, I'll ask you to please stop and provide the opportunity for your next community member to come and speak. We will hear a summary of public comment at the end of the public comment sessions that we can take here. So, first person to speak is Gabriel Forrest. Are you present? And when you speak, I believe you have to hold the button down to the mic? No? Not today. It's live today. Thank you. Okay, so no Gabriel. They're checking outside.
Maybe go on to the next one, and then we can always bring Gabriel back.
We'll bring Gabriel back in. Ronnie Daniels.
We can hear you.
Can you hear me?
We can.
All right. My name is Ronnie Daniels. I have my God children, stay on 48632 Sugar Road, North East. I live in Polk County, in Sheridan, outside of Willamina. I'm here to address three things real quick. Number one, right now, with the changing everything, the summer's been beautiful. The kids have been everything possible. What I see happening right now with the CDC and everything, they're playing politics with the kids and calling division and every damn thing else. Excuse my language. But I will say, I don't need no more. We've got kids right now going through emotional roller coasters and steadiness, anxiety, and everything else that you could think about. There's even been suicides and shootings in the city and valley. Over 100-some kids have died since March to March time period. Overdosing and suicides because of stress and everything, trying to fit in, trying to go in directions. That's not the way we need to be. If we're going to give these kids a chance, it should be personal choice. I did not serve my country or my foster father who went there and cleaned up the cow in Sabreboro. After 120 missions over Germany, escorting bombers then went back into service in '46 to clean up Auschwitz, the cow in Sabreboro. He did not go through and talk to me as a foster kid or my foster mother who raised 500 kids over a period of 40 years, that individual freedom that's possible. I respectfully request that we go through and give these people a chance. If they want them to have mandatory, they should be in separate schools. If you're going to play this game, or it should be up to the classroom teacher's choice. And the thing is this, what the governor's doing is not a law by the legislators. It is an executive order. An executive order says, hey, 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 don't be doing all that. Don't give me no credit. Fact. Thing is this, we have to get back to what we're talking about. If we want to heal our communities, give our kids opportunity. Our grade levels, we have, you spend $12,500 a kid, federal state money combined, we're 48th in the damn country. We're lower than Mississippi. It's time to get back to family. It's time to get back to reading, writing, arithmetic, not this COVID, politics, CRT, Barbra Streisand, any of the jolly throwing about. I don't need no more division. I don't need no Jim Crow things. We need to get back, I want the kids to have an opportunity to be what they want to be, do what they want to do, and become the best they can become at possible, vocational, or college, or even if they decide to do their own businesses. We got to get that accountable. If we don't, we're going to tear these communities apart up and down. We're going to see crime going up. You're going to be like Portland? 58 people already died? They lost more people since 1994? That's what's coming. I lived through LA, as a foster, born South Central. My middle-class neighborhood in three years, because we want to cater, we want to accept. Three years, Maxine Waters was a goddamn puppet string behind my city council. Middle class, hardwood floors, acre in the back, pond, and everything. We lost it in three years. My neighborhood went from middle-class to nothing in three years because of divisiveness, revolving doors and everything else. If we don't take care of our kids, treat them as they should, give them a right to, in their history, know all of history, and leave no masks, let's get it done.
Thank you, Ronnie.
Thank you very much.
Angelica Lagos. L-A-G-O-S.
You don't have to hold the button.
Buenas noches, presidente y miembros de la junta escolar. Soy Angelica Lagos. Vivo en el noreste de Salem, y soy parte del grupo de liderazgo de padres y madres de la coalición para la igualdad de Salem Kaiser. Quiero contarles mi historia. Conocí, comencé a asistir al programa con la coalición desde hace cinco años, cuando mis hijas aún eran pequeñas. Ellos me han apoyado y me han enseñado a lo largo de los años. Mientras mis hijas crecen y nos unimos a nuestra familia, luchamos a través de muchos traumas y trabajo arduo. A pesar de nuestros obstáculos, mi hija ahora está en los últimos años de secundaria, y mis hijas las más pequeñas están en la primaria. Les está yendo muy bien en la escuela, incluso durante la pandemia. Durante la lucha, durante las luchas personales, aunque ambos padres trabajamos mucho horas todos los días, aún así completaron su trabajo escolar. Recuerdo cuando ocurrió la elección 11 en noviembre del 2016, como si fuera ayer. Recuerdo que mi familia estaba en pánico. Mis hijas tenían miedo. No querían asistir a la escuela. Algunos de sus amigos sufrieron abuso y miedo. En enero se publicó la resolución de las escuelas seguras y acogedoras. No fue tan fuerte, pero fue útil, porque sabía que era el producto de nuestra defensa y colaboración con los líderes del distrito escolar, los maestros y otros. Gracias por hacerlo más fuerte este año. Aprecio mucho el apoyo y todo lo que ustedes hacen por nuestros hijos e hijas. Muchísimas gracias.
Good evening, chair and school board members. I am Angelica Lagos, and I live in northeast Salem, and I am a part of the parent leadership group of the Salem Kaiser Coalition for Equality. I want to tell you my story. I began attending programs with the coalition for five years ago when my children were very small. They have supported me and taught me throughout all the years as my children grew, as we added to our family, and as we struggled through much trauma and hard work. In spite of our obstacles, my oldest daughter is now in her last years of middle school, and my younger daughters are in their last years of elementary. Even during the pandemic, they have endured personal struggles, and with both parents working long hours every day, they still managed to complete their work. I remember when the election of November 11, 2016, happened like it was yesterday. I remember my family was in panic. My children were afraid to go to school. Some of their friends suffered abuse and fear. In January, the safe and welcoming school resolution came out. It was not so strong, but it was helpful because I knew that it was the product of our advocacy and collaboration with the school district leaders, teachers, and others. Thank you for making it stronger this year. I appreciate a lot of the support and all you do for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Gracias. Marisela Lagos García.
We can't hear the speaker from that here, so maybe we can get him to the microphone.
Si puede hablar más fuerte en el micrófono, por favor. Can you please speak louder to the microphone, please?
Buenas noches, miembros de la junta y superintendente Perry. Soy Marisela Lagos García. Mis hijos y pronto mi nieta estarán en la escuela de Salem Kaiser en el noreste de Salem. También soy la coordinadora del proyecto de organización de padres de la Coalición para la Igualdad de Salem Kaiser. Quiero comentar sobre el plan de regreso a clases de la superintendente. Pero primero quiero dar la bienvenida a nuestros nuevos miembros de la junta. No tuve la oportunidad de hacerlo el mes pasado. Es un gran orgullo y honor tener esta oportunidad de dar la bienvenida a los nuevos miembros de la junta. Que no solo comparten merencia latina, también algunos comparten mi experiencia de una familia emigrante de México, con historia en el arduo trabajo que hacemos para poner la comida en las mesas de Norteamérica. Es un gran alivio contar con ustedes que comprenden y respetan mis antecedentes, las luchas de toda la vida, y el trauma de venir a los Estados Unidos para trabajar bajo el sol ardiente y el frío helado para que podamos construir un futuro mejor a nuestros hijos. Respecto al plan de regreso a clases, quiero contarles las preocupaciones que me están diciendo algunos padres. Estarán desinfectando los salones entre clase y clase cuando mi hijo de secundaria o preparatoria se mueva de un salón a otro? ¿Cómo van a mantener a los estudiantes separados unos de otros? Porque no se requiere que todos, ¿por qué no requieren que todos los maestros y el personal estén vacunados? ¿Cómo mantendrán seguros a nuestros niños cuando vayan a almorzar? Las mesas están demasiado llenas, y los niños no usarán cubrebocas y estarán demasiado juntos. Todos estamos muy contentos de que la gobernadora haya cambiado las reglas sobre las máscaras y sobre estar exigiendo. Ninguno de los muchos padres que conozco en nuestros programas es un anti-enmascaramiento. ¿Podrían responder estas preguntas que hacen cientos de padres? Gracias.
Good evening, chair, board members, and superintendent Perry. I am Marisela Lagos, and my children and soon grandchildren are in the Salem Kaiser Schools in northeast Salem. I am also the coordinator of the parent organizing project of the Salem Kaiser Coalition for Equality. I want to comment on the superintendent's back-to-school plan. But first, I want to welcome our new board members. I didn't have a chance to do last month. It is with great pride and honor that I have this chance to welcome new board members who not only share my Latino heritage, but some who share my experience as an immigrant from Mexico, with the history and the hard work we do in putting food on the tables of America. It is a big relief to have you who understand and respect my background, the lifelong struggles and trauma of coming to the United States for jobs working in the hot sun and freezing cold, so that we can make a better future for our children. Regarding the back-to-school plan, I want to share with you some of the questions and concerns that parents are asking me. Will they be sanitizing the classrooms between classes when my middle or high school children moves from room to room? How are they going to keep the students' distance apart from each other? Why aren't all the teachers and staff required to be vaccinated? How will you keep our children safe when eating lunch? The tables are too crowded, and the kids don't wear masks, and they are too close together. We are all very glad that the governor changed the rules about masks and are now requiring them. Not one of the many parents I know in our programs is an anti-masker. Could you please answer these questions that hundreds of parents are asking? Thank you.
Thank you. Gracias. Alma Campos. After Alma will be Andres Domingo.
Buenas noches, miembros de la junta. Superintendente Perry. Soy Alma Campos, y crea mis hijos en las escuelas de Salem Kaiser. Quiero comentar sobre los procedimientos y de los comentarios públicos como padre y como miembro del grupo de padres y madres líderes de la Coalición para la Igualdad de Salem Kaiser. Primero, quiero agradecer a la junta por continuar comunicándose con el público sobre el proceso de testimonio público, por escuchar los testimonios de la comunidad el mes pasado, y por actualizarlos y presentarlos nuevamente esta noche para una segunda revisión. Me ha ayudado en pensarlo bien y tener más ideas. Quiero sugerir cambiar el elemento en el primer punto. Tiene sentido cerrar los comentarios por escrito y los comentarios en video el lunes, pero no tiene sentido cerrarlos el lunes a las 4:00 PM para aquellos que simplemente se están inscribiendo para hablar en persona. Cerrar el lunes, pero para ofrecer una hoja de registro el martes por la noche no tiene sentido, y evita que mucha gente ocupada se registre temprano. Tendría más sentido elegir un horario como el mediodía del martes. Entonces, las publicidades de que muchas personas intenten inscribirse en persona se reducirían. Y los miembros de la comunidad que trabajan están tarde, hasta tarde, podrían inscribirse el lunes por la noche o el martes por la mañana. Gracias por sus consideraciones y por la energía y el tiempo que están dedicando en su trabajo voluntario para nuestros 42,000 estudiantes y sus familias. Dios los bendiga a todos.
Good evening, chair, board members, and superintendent Perry. I am Alma Campos, and I have raised my children in the Salem Kaiser Schools in northeast Salem. I want to comment on the public comment procedure as a parent and as a staff member of the Salem Kaiser Coalition for Equality. First, I want to thank the board for continuing to communicate with the public about the public testimony process, for listening to the community's testimonies last month, and for updating and presenting these for us again tonight for a second review. It has helped me think it through and have more ideas. I want to suggest changing one item in the first bullet. It makes sense to close written comment and video comments on Monday, but it doesn't make sense to close on Monday at 4:00 PM for those who are simply signing up to speak in person. Closing on Monday but offering a signup sheet on Tuesday night doesn't make sense and prevents a lot of busy people from signing up early. It would make more sense to choose a time such as noon on Tuesday, then the chances of having lots of people trying to sign up in person would be reduced. And community members who work late could sign up on Monday night or Tuesday morning. Thank you for your consideration and for the energy and time you are dedicating to your volunteer work for our 42,000 students and their families.
Gracias. Thank you. Andres Domingo. Andres? Por favor. After that, we'll have Rebecca Castrenovo.
Buenas noches, presidentes, miembros de la junta, superintende Perry. Soy Andres Domingo, y creé a mis hijos en la escuela de Salem Kaiser y northeast Salem. Quiero comentar sobre los procedimientos de comentarios públicos como padre y miembros del grupo de liderazgo de padres de la Coalición para la Igualdad de Salem Kaiser. Primero, quiero dar la bienvenida a nuestros nuevos miembros de la junta. Y no tuve la oportunidad de hacerlo el mes pasado. Salem y Kaiser son comunidades diversas, y las muchas organizaciones que presentan esta diversidad son dignas de ser escuchadas. Me gusta el hecho de que el presidente tiene la discreción de elegir entre diferentes grupos de personas en lugar de utilizar únicamente la guía de primero en llegar, primero en servir a medidas que escuchar testimonios y comentarios. Es mucho más justo. Sin embargo, me gustaría seguir dos revisiones. Primero, la palabra categoría no significa personas. Significa cosas. Estoy seguro de que todos ustedes les costó encontrar la palabra correcta, pero no son categorías. Si quiero algo como grupos de personas. Segunda, la frase incluir lo siguiente debería cambiarse por incluir, pero no limitarse a. También quiero sugerir que agregue una sección opcional al proceso de registro que permitiría a las personas identificarse más como por raza, etnia, religión, sexualidad, género, y otros. De esta manera podría, de esta manera podrá elegir a una persona que podrá ser la única persona que se inscriba entre un pequeño grupo de personas que son importantes para ser escuchadas. Es opcional, pero les da una forma de aumentar.
Andres, ya se acabó sus tres minutos. Your time has been up, and now three minutes to translate.
Good evening, chair, board members, and superintendent Perry. I am Andres Domingo, and I have raised my children in the Salem Kaiser Schools in northeast Salem. I want to comment on the public comment procedures as a parent and a member of the parent leadership group at the Salem Kaiser Coalition for Equality. First, I want to welcome our new board members, who I didn't have a chance to do last month. Salem and Kaiser are diverse communities, and the many organizations that represent that diversity are worthy of being heard. I like the fact that the chair has the discretion to choose from different groups of people, rather than only using the guide of first come, first served as you hear testimonies and comments. It is much more fair. However, I would like to suggest two revisions. The word categories doesn't signify people. It signifies things. I am sure you all struggle to find the right word, but it is not categories. I suggest something like people groups. The phrase include the following should be changed to include but not limited to. I also want to suggest that you add an optional section to the signup process that would allow people to identify themselves more, such as by race, ethnicity, religion, sexuality, gender, and others. This way, you would be able to choose a person who might be the only person signing up from a small group of people who are important to be heard. It is optional, but that gives them a way to increase their chances of being heard. Thank you.
Gracias. Thank you very much. So we have Rebecca Castrenovo, and then on the phone, so Director McDowell, if you would be able to get Gabriel Forrest on deck. Is Rebecca? Rebecca here. No? Director McDowell, how long would it take you to get Gabriel Forrest?
On phone?
Yeah.
Jordan?
Yes, we have one caller currently on the line.
Are you on standby?
Yes. Can you hear me? We currently have one caller on the line.
Jordan?
Yes.
Oh, there we go.
Is it up now? Okay. Jordan, can we get the caller on the line, please?
Yes, sorry about that. We have one caller on the line currently. Julissa, if you may unmute, you may go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hey, Alice, can you put the microphone on the speaker? Hang on just a second. There we go.
Can we turn the mic towards the TV?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. My name is Julissa Rodriguez, and I am an educator in the district. And I have pondered regards to the re-opening school plan and the focus on masks. And our focus is actually on my current colleagues. And I believe the school district needs to do a better job to be them accountable for their actions when they do not wear them or they wear it inappropriately. We've already been about two years into this thing. And as the roles were rehearsed, and there were students six months into the school year not following the routine deliberately, the teacher would write them up for being defiant. So I think it's really important that when the reports go to the school district, that they take them seriously. I know last school year, there were hundreds and hundreds that went in and not being resulted of it. We, students, are obligated to interact with us, so we are obligated to keep them safe by making sure we keep our masks on and slowly over our nose, all the way down to our chin, and just be responsible. We're all adults. It should be a simple task that is asked of us. Masks do work. Prior to the mask mandate removal in the end of May, or June, whenever it ended, our seven-day COVID numbers were about 150. At the end of July, there were 700 on a seven-day period. So I'm asking the district and my colleagues to be responsible and to wear masks appropriately and to hold those staff members who are not doing it accountable. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one more caller. Chair, we have one more caller.
Who's the caller?
Our next caller is Yadira.
Yadira?
Yadira, are you able to unmute?
Yadira, you on the phone?
If you press star six, you should be able to unmute.
We can try to come back to Yadira.
I believe she just unmuted. Hello?
Okay, there you are.
Yes, okay, hi. Good evening, Board Members and Superintendent Christie Perry. My name is Yadira Juarez. I live in Northeast Salem and I am the Program Director of the Salem Kaiser Coalition for Equality. I would like to start by welcoming the new school board members. Every day, I am working with children of all age and their parents. This summer, I have learned the names of one sixty, one hundred and fifty-two new family members attending our summer programs for all age. No matter how many hours I work to support all the staff to make this happen, it is a joy to come to work every morning. I go home after long days with a smile of peace and satisfaction. My greatest joy is seeing the faces of our families as they see the ocean, the ocean for the first time, and learn to read a map at the Oregon Garden. I am filled with pride when I see their progress in reading and math. And when I see their happiness in dancing and art, I am filled with love when I see moms understanding the children's social and emotional development and finding more calm and satisfaction of parenting. But then I think of the fall, of back to school this year. I am filled with trepidation this year more than ever because of COVID-19 and the Delta variant. But every year, I feel the same because there is a lot of worries in the hearts and minds of parents. Every parent probably feels some of this, but our parents have additional things to add to the list of the worries. So many have fears about bullying, I think more than ever. And then add to it the threat of ICE, police, and certain teachers, prejudice, makes this, makes the parents live of worries longer. So every word in this safe and welcoming school resolution is necessary. And I cannot thank you enough for adding more strength to this each year. This year, the strength you have had reflects the fact that we have now, now for the first time, Latino, Latina representatives who share my story. I can see their contribution clearly. Thank you.
Thank you, Yadira. Director McDowell, no more callers?
No callers at this time.
So we'll have one more person speaking on our agenda topics today, which is Ann Olivia Palazzo Angulo. And then after that, we'll have Forrest Lippold on the mic.
Good evening Chair and Board Members. I'm Ann Olivia Palazzo Angulo and I live in Northeast Salem. I'm the Executive Director of the Salem Kaiser Coalition for Equality. I'm reflecting on the past five years and the development of the Safe and Welcoming Schools Resolution. It started after the November two thousand sixteen presidential election. That's when a frantic fear took hold of our Latino, Latina and Latinx communities and nearly a thousand children disappeared from our schools by January two thousand seventeen. I remember calling Christie to ask her if she'd seen the newspaper article about what Portland Public Schools did on November eighteenth. They had made a resolution that was just short of declaring the district a sanctuary district. It called for immediate churning of all staff on blocking immigration officials from entering schools or accessing student records without going through the superintendent and the district's general counsel in person directly with adequate notice. It added something we have struggled for decades. They forbade staff from asking about a student's immigration status. That was added to their resolution. Christie worked hard with her team, SKCE, teachers and others to put together the Salem Kaiser Schools' response. The board went over it at length, belaboring every point and compromising with resistors in December of two thousand sixteen. And on January tenth, two thousand seventeen, it was adopted. Two concepts stood out. Immigration status was listed as something that could not be discriminated against for the first time. And ICE was mentioned once. Staff would be made aware of and enforce the administrative policy that existed about dealing with non-local law enforcement, including immigration officials who entered district property. It was a start, but it is delight, or each year Christie and her team have worked with others to strengthen the resolution. This year, I can see strong evidence of board members contributing. It is with delight that I read tonight the inclusion of students' constitutional rights and being free from unreasonable searches and seizures and that the school board expects the district shall do everything in its lawful power to protect students' confidential information and ensure that our students' learning environments are not disrupted by immigration enforcement actions and that any federal immigration official seeking entry to schools or communication with students shall immediately be forwarded to the district's legal counsel. It would be great to add that one sentence forbid staff from asking about a student's immigration status, but otherwise, I strongly recommend this resolution for adoption tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to invite our young Speaker Forrest Lippold. Forrest, are you still here? Great, courageous young man participating. I want to applaud you for participating in your civic engagement and your opportunity to come and speak to your school board today. Forrest, can you unmute down to your face?
Thank you. Hello Superintendent Perry, Chair Villa and the board. My name is Forrest. I am in the fifth grade. I would like you to hear from a kid what masks feel like every day. First, I am an active and sweaty kid. My mask gets wet and damp. It feels really gross. I can't, second, I can't stay focused on lessons because my teacher is very hard to hear. Three, masks make me feel very sad. I can't see their smiles and teachers seem mad all the time. It should be my choice if I want to wear a mask or not. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Abigail Eckhart. After that, we have Janita Brandigan. Janita Brandigan.
My name is Abigail Eckhart and I appreciate the time that you've given us today. To the board members, in the meeting of legislators, the state health officer, Dr. Seibinger, communicated that there is zero scientific evidence that K through twelve students are responsible for community spread of coronavirus. I am not here to ask for permission from you. You are not my child's doctor. It is not your job to tell me how to parent and care for my child's well-being. While I've been continuing with the charade with no factual evidence of COVID-19 affecting children in the state of Oregon, three children have died in this state from COVID-19. Last year, our school district had twenty-six cases of COVID, according to your own data. My child has been in in-person therapy since May of two thousand twenty without a mask. He went onto the doctor, the dentist, church, the grocery store without a mask. My child had COVID and doesn't know that he had COVID because I chose not to push a narrative of fear. So speaking of a narrative, is this board saying that parents who want a choice are not loving and caring? Is this board turning our children into little child soldiers of a political war and calling it a small sacrifice? Please talk to me about sacrifice after you have not been allowed to see your dad for six months of the end of his life because he's in a hospital, because of elected officials who thought it was in his best interest to isolate him as a disabled, brain-injured individual from his own family, leaving him without understanding of what COVID-19 actually was because my dad went into the hospital before this pandemic started. Are you just being insensitive or maybe you don't know that there are parents and families in your community who have gone through tremendous sacrifice? It's not about a mask, it's about our freedom, which, by the way, I'm an American citizen, I was born here and I'm proud of that. And I have no problem waving the American flag and standing for my country and standing for the Pledge of Allegiance because my family fought for this country. And I'm going to tell my children that. It was a Democratic superintendent who put my grandfather in a segregated school and I'm not ignorant to that fact. I'm here for my children, fighting for my children like my family fought for me. And I close with this. Proverbs twenty-eight one, twenty-eight sixteen says, "A ruler who lacks understanding is a great oppressor." Isaiah ten says, "Woe to those who decree unrighteous decrees, who write misfortune, which they have prescribed. What will you do in the day of punishment and the desolation which will come from afar? To whom will you flee for help?" And I'm here to say as a concerned parent in this community with children in these schools, the narrative that is being pushed, which is obvious by the presence in this room and the atmosphere outside, the bullying already posted on the Latinos Unidos Siempres page, already mocking people and parents who are here to speak with valid concerns for our children. I'm Hispanic too.
Abigail, thank you for sharing that. Very passionate. Your time is up. Janita? Hey, please, calm down, please. Respectful. Remember the diverse welcome statement.
So I'm Latina, I'm not embarrassed about it. Good evening, board. Last week, my name is Janita Brandigan, I am in Zone One. I introduced myself via phone two weeks ago, letting you know that I was the State Director for Black Lives and I'm here on behalf of a large community that feels underrepresented. We have a lot of conservative parents that are scared, as you can see why. They get doxxed, they get put up on Facebook, they get made fun of because of the shoes they wear or the clothes they wear because they have gray hair. I have been insulted. I'm not here for anybody but to protect these children. Whether they like it or not, we are here to give freedom to our students. They have to have freedom of choice. I'm not a doctor and I'm not a lawyer, but I spent quite my weekend reading this. It, this is a lot of work. Can you imagine most parents don't have the time to look through this? This is embarrassing because you're trying to reach your community. This is not the way you do it. This is embarrassing because this is really long and we don't have that kind of time. You guys, this is your job, this is not my job. And it's embarrassing to have to spend the whole weekend with sometimes even a dictionary. But I found something very interesting. Whether you like it or not, I would like the board to look into this. It's ORS three-three-nine point eighty-five. It's the definition because I will refer back to OR three-three-nine point two-eight-eight. The definition for restraint means the restriction of a student's actions or movements by holding the student or using pressure or other means. ORS three-three-nine point two-eight-eight. Prohibitions on use of certain restraints. I can go and I'm going to read the whole thing. The use of the following types of restraints on a student in a public education program is prohibited. Chemical restraint, mechanical restraint, prone restraint, supine restraint, any restraint that involves the intentional and non-incidental use of a solid object, including a wall or a floor, to impede a student's movement unless restraint is necessary to prevent an imminent life-threatening injury or to gain control of a weapon. Any restraint that places or creates a risk placing pressure on a student's neck or throat. Any restraint that places or creates a risk of placing pressure on a student's mouth unless the restraint is necessary for the purpose of extracting a body part from a bite. H, any restraint that impedes or creates a risk of impeding breathing. Like I said, I'm not a lawyer, but I'll tell you right now, if you're going to give me this, I'm going to find a group of lawyers to fight this. Our kids, we deserve freedom to not have to wear a mask. This is out of control, the science is not there, we're not going to flip-flop day to day. Thank you.
Your time is up, appreciate it. Megan Lippold. After Megan, we'll have Riley Harrigan.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello Superintendent Perry, Chair Villa and the entire board. My name is Megan and I'm a parent of two children that attend Salem Kaiser School District and they're enrolled in the Indian Education Program. I'm here today to address the very concerning stance the district has decided to take against individuals' rights of medical freedom and is in agreement with unconstitutional government overreach. There's a very large group in the community, including staff in the school district, who feel that they will be retaliated against for coming forward. It was very apparent at the district's engagement Zoom calls last week when it was stated that Superintendent Perry wanted to change the narrative on masks instead of listening to the individuals that are demanding medical freedom for their kids. First, our children have made enough sacrifices, they're not political pawns. Second, there have been studies done on the bacteria, parasites, fungi and many, much more that have been found on our kids' masks. If it was really about their health, this study would be taken seriously. I will send you the link in email. Third, it's not your responsibility to tell us what sacrifices any of us should be making. My goal is to run from loving school, excelling in subjects, loving their teachers, to resisting and crying on the way to school many days because of having to be wearing a mask. It became normal to do damage control every day when we picked our kids up over masks. My oldest would tell me most days that he would get so wet and sweaty that he needed to take it off, but he would get in trouble. He was denied breathing breaks, they were called, and he felt very picked on for wanting to actually breathe air. You heard me right, he was denied breathing breaks. The purpose of government is to secure the rights of the people. The governor has made the decision to ignore this fact and the school district, whose main function is to educate our children, has decided to side with the unconstitutional government overreach. How on earth does this make any sense? If our school system is deciding to be a part of her overreach in our state, what is the plan to abide by the school district's own mission statement? Supporting all students to graduate and being prepared for a successful life. Complying with unlawful mandates is not preparing them for a successful life, nor is siding with a totalitarian dictatorship. Every time we comply, we establish a future for our children, which other will no longer have the option to stand up. Today, I'm asking you to stand up and do the right thing, like many other districts are doing in the state. I'm asking for you to make masks and vaccines optionals for all students, staff and families without any guilt, shame, coercion or bullying. The district's own dress code policy states that the primary responsibility for a student's dress attire resides with the student and the parent or guardian. And it also states that a student may wear religious head coverings, religious headwear.
Thank you.
Our children are not wearing masks and that's our religious choice.
Riley, and then after Riley, we have Stephen Shippey.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Riley Harrigan, I'm from Salem, Zone One. As we're getting ready for school to start back up, the governor, as we all know, has mandated masks on students and now everybody, starting Friday, indoors. Further, she's instructed ODE to coerce the board into following the guidelines made up by an unelected body of bureaucrats. ORS one-six-three dot two-seven-five defines quite clearly that what coercion is and by virtue of the threats of fines and civil penalties to enforce the governor's whim, that you, as the board, would otherwise be able to decide, you and the schools are being coerced. ORS three-three-nine dot two-eight-eight, as we've heard just recently, outlines that it is illegal to use any device that is designed to or is capable of restricting students' breathing. Anyone remember the kids passing out? Governor's Executive Order twenty-one fifteen rescinds all COVID-19 restrictions, including masks, in the K-12 system and returns, quote, "decision-making regarding the health and safety of students in K-12 schools" to local school districts, unquote. That's you guys. She also stated clearly, quote, "statutory emergency authorities will be used at the state level for the limited purpose of resilience and recovery, not to impose or renew statewide pandemic restrictions."
Riley, can I ask you just to slow down your speech a second for our translators to keep up with you?
Okay.
Thank you.
No new executive order has been issued to change this. Even if one is issued, it will be violating her promise and this one, where does it stop? I emailed you all last week, or at least I tried to, and sent you all a link to a CDC-published study that cites it. study that cites at least 10 randomized controlled trials that showed no statistically significant benefit to masking. I also sent you a link, as we've heard recently, tonight for an analysis out of Florida where parents had their masks analyzed and showed a list of far more deadly pathogens after just six hours of use. Kids aren't spreading COVID. According to a letter to the governor, as we heard tonight, from a senator and a representative in Oregon, Dr. Si Linger from OHA, quote, "communicated to legislators during a conference call on Monday that there is no scientific evidence that schools or children grades K through 12 are responsible for community spread. In the entire state of Oregon, only three kids under the age of 19 have died, and while each death is a tragedy, three deaths statewide out of over 38,000 cases in that age range means that the case fatality rate for Oregon for 19 and under is .0078%. The true infection fatality rate would be far lower than that. Compare that to the rise in suicides. The most recent official data I could find was from 2019 from an annual report from OHA that said that just in Marion County, there were 10 deaths by suicides in youths. These masks impede communication, pose a real physical threat, and are detrimental to the mental health of students and their social development. Other school boards in Oregon have deemed that masks perpetuate discrimination and inequity. The masks infringe on a number of the elements of the Safe and Welcoming Schools Resolution Amendment."
Thank you, Riley. Your time is up. Appreciate it.
Even though you interrupted me.
I'd let you go. Linda Farrington, after Stephen. So at this time, we have Stephen Shippey. Are you here? No, Stephen. So Linda Farrington, and then we'll have Lena Howden.
Good evening, Board members, and thank you Superintendent Perry and Chair Avila. We really appreciate that you're listening to us today. I think, wait, can I move this? I think we all want happy, healthy children, and we can agree that COVID-19 is a serious viral disease that has impacted our community and around the world. People are scared, confused, and polarized because the data is not clear, open, and transparent, and because of lies, common sense. The inconsistent way of recording and documenting about who is sick and who died of what and inconsistent statements about what should be done about it makes it difficult to compare apples to apples and just leads to more distrust. We are following the wrong metric, in my estimation. Instead of worrying about how many people are testing positive, we should be worrying about how many are very sick. How many are going to be sick anyway? There is a lot of fudging with the numbers that leaves everyone uneasy, and there are several issues here at stake. First, the local school districts have the right to control what happens at school by Oregon law. We are asking that you exercise that right and do what is best for our students. Second, there's a lot of talk about following the science. Why aren't we doing it? How can you produce one good study on the proven benefits of wearing a mask to prevent the spread of COVID? How will you know when the masks are no longer required? Third, what is the goal? What are you expecting to happen? If there's no change, will you insist masks stay indefinitely? What metric are you using for implementing masks on children, and what metric were you used to remove the mask mandate? Why are we doing things for this virus that we didn't do for all the other dangerous contagious viruses that we've had? If your goal is to eradicate COVID from the community, it will never work. Sorry. Viruses cannot be filtered out because they are nanometers in size, which means they must be seen with a micron microscope. COVID also has animal reservoirs, so it will not go away. You can't just eradicate it because it is living in animals and it will come back. Viruses circulate all year long for a person who is immunologically depressed or run down and will infect them. The best way to fight these viral illnesses is to work on staying healthy. If you want to help families, supplement their meals with zinc, vitamin C, and D that have been shown to be protective. I worked for a nurse for about 10 years in the ED and another in the recovery room, and my understanding of infection control questions how the mask can be sanitary at all. Wearing cloth face coverings is against everything learned about disease transmission.
Linda, thank you very much. Your time is up. Lena, Lena Howden, are you present? After Lena will be Joel or Joel Camillo.
Thank you for being here this evening. I have four children that will potentially be attending school at Salem Kaiser. It has been said in previous meetings that wearing a mask is a small sacrifice to be able to be in school five days a week. By saying it is a sacrifice, we are willingly admitting that something about wearing a mask is sacrificial, meaning there are risks for our children, and yet those sacrifices on their health and learning aren't being talked about. Over the past year and a half, we have asked our students to sacrifice their learning. As most learning was done remotely and was not done five days a week, now we are asking our children to return to buildings so they can learn en masse, sacrificing their physical health and their learning, as it is well-known that preschool children through elementary ages especially need to see facial expression and mouth movement to be able to learn to read, let alone the psychological issues that are also problematic for children with mask-wearing. Salem Kaiser teachers have been trained to teach children through mouth movement and facial recognition. How is the school board and the superintendent advocating for mask requirements to be up to the parents, since we know this will not help in their learning process but rather hinder it? There is, to my understanding, along with many others, no scientific data research. I'm going to skip this part. We've heard it a lot already. But there is, however, research that shows many potential problems of children in masks. My children have dropped their masks on restroom floors and then felt they needed to put them back on their faces due to the requirements of face masks. Young children cannot grasp the problems of bacteria and other problems that may come with mask-wearing, but that's our job as adults to keep them safe. With what we have seen from research, there's greater cause for concern with children in masks all day than children without. We need you to advocate for our children and to represent families accurately. Please advocate for choice on mask-wearing and for the best learning and safety for our children. You have been elected to do this. Please tell us how you will be advocating for choice with mask-wearing so that parents and their local school districts, not the governor, can best decide how to help their children learn and remain safe at school. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Joel? Joel? And after Joel will be Carrie Zoner, and then we'll do a break.
Hello Superintendent Perry, Chair Olivia, and Board. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Joel Camillo. I live in Salem. I am a taxpayer, a voter, and more importantly, a mother of a student in Salem Kaiser School District. I am here today to ask you to make masking parents and student choice. I understand masking is highly debated. I asked Pat Allen several times over the last year to show me the scientific studies that he is basing his recommendations for masking kids, especially during sports, and he never responded. To my knowledge, no one in state leadership has ever produced any such research, probably because it doesn't exist. I have looked and haven't been able to find it. What I have found is studies stating that children are at low risk of COVID-19. The effectiveness of masks is inconclusive. Schools have not driven the spread of COVID-19. Schools without masking have not fared any worse than schools with masking have not fared any worse than schools without masking. Like I said, it's highly debated. Last year, when the students were finally allowed to return to in-person learning two days a week, which was not enough, my son, who attends high school in the district, was shamed, bullied, and ridiculed by teachers, staff members, and students when he did not have his mask up. Not once did they ask him why he needed to pull his mask down. He developed a breathing issue from the mask after returning to school and having to run sprints from baseball in his mask. He had a teacher kick him out of class for not having his mask above his nose. This same teacher would stand over his desk when he was taking a drink of water to make sure he immediately pulled his mask back up. Not good use of the little class time they had. While walking through the hallway full of students one day, he had a staff member scream at him to pull up his mask, causing everyone in the hallway to turn and look at him. This is not behavior from district employees or adults, frankly, that I want around my children. I thought bullying kids was against Salem Kaiser School District policies. My son is not a troublemaker. He would never swear at adults who tried to engage them in conversation. He is a three-sport athlete with a 3.8 GPA, only a 3.8 since COVID. My question to the Board is turning kids away from school and targeted bullying from teachers worth enforcing that is not only something that's highly debated on its effectiveness at all, but also harmful to a lot, if not all, students? I was planning to attend the district meetings where you said you wanted feedback from parents on back-to-school. I decided not to waste my time after talking to several parents who attended and said that it was stated during the meeting that masking is considered kind and considerate, and we, as parents, are basically encouraged to make our kids fall in line. That statement is appalling because of three major assumptions. One, that masks work to prevent the spread of COVID. Again, very debatable.
Joel, thank you for your time is up. Carrie.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Carrie Zoner, and I live in West Salem, and it's nice to see you all. Thanks for having us. I'm sending you this notice on behalf of my family as findings raise significant concerns both medically and legally of the current mask policy in place. Masks are ineffective for the purpose claimed by the mandate, potentially harmful, and only authorized for emergency use. It's a myth that masks prevent viruses from spreading. The overall evidence is clear. Standard cloth and surgical masks offer no protection against virus-sized particles or small aerosols. Wearing a mask to prevent catching SARS-CoV-2 or similarly incised influenza is like throwing sand at a chain-link fence. It doesn't work. There have been one large randomized controlled trial and specifically examined whether masks protect their wearers from the coronavirus. This study found wearing a mask did not reduce at conventional levels of statistical significance the incidence of SARS-CoV-2. There have been hundreds of mask studies related to influenza transmission done over decades. It's well-established the fact that masks do not stop viruses. Part of that evidence shows that cloth face masks actually increase influenza-like illness. Bacteria are 50% larger than virus particles. As such, virus particles can enter through the mask pores, yet particularly bacteria remain trapped inside the mask, resulting the mask wearer continually exposed to this bacteria. All parties mandating the use of face masks are not only wilfully ignoring established science, but are engaging in the amounts to a whole-school clinical experimental trial. This conclusion is reached by the fact that face masks use and COVID-19 incidents are being reported in scientific opinion pieces promoted by the CDC and others. The fact is, after reviewing all of the studies worldwide, the CDC found no reduction in viral transmission with one of the uses of these face masks. Additionally, children have been reported to shown not to be the drivers of this contagion. It is well-accepted that children have statistically zero chance of diving from COVID. Furthermore, the mandatory mouth mask in schools is a major threat to child's development. It ignores the essential needs of a growing child. The well-being of a child and young people is highly dependent on the emotional connection with others. Masks create a threatening and unsafe environment where emotional connection becomes difficult. Regardless of the lack of safety and efficacy behind the decision to wear a child or wear a face mask, it is illegal to mandate emergency-use equipment approved investigational medical therapies without informed consent. Mask use for viral transmission prevention is authorized for emergency use only, and I have documentation for that. Emergency-use authorization by the FDA means the products are investigational and experimental only. The statute granting the FDA the power to authorize a medical product of emergency use requires that that person being administered the unapproved product be advised of his or her right to refuse the administration of that product.
Thank you, Carrie. Your time is up.
No masks for my kids.
Thank you. It is 7:26. We will take a 10-minute break. Return at 7:36.
Everybody, really appreciate the testimony and the responsibility that we're all taking place here. This is a small confined place, and just please recognize the public health and being respectful to one another. And while others are speaking, I really appreciate that. We're going to provide another, about another 35, 40 more minutes of public testimony, and we'll try to hear as many, as everybody as we can. And if we can't get through everybody, I really apologize, but we do want to continue with the district work, the announcements and the presentations and reports provided by the district administration. So at this time, we'll have Crystal and then Alondra after that. So if Crystal's here, Crystal Otto?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead and get started. No, it's supposed to be in person, but... Okay, that was, sorry, that was just... Okay. Well, no Crystal? Okay, Alondra, we have... Oh, wait, we...
No, I'm not. I'm watching.
Okay. So we'll move on to Alondra.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so to start off, my name is Alondra, and I do not want to say what school I go to, what age I am, and where I am, because, yeah, anyways, I do not feel safe in this place at the moment because of the people behind us that are not wearing masks. It's literally nasty. COVID is real, and I have family who literally can die from COVID, and that scares me. Like, I don't want my family members to die because of the people behind us who are not wearing masks. Allowing them to be here is a direct attack on our family. I don't know if you guys know that, but it is. It's disgusting how you guys let these white people in without their mask. I don't know if you guys know about the law about the 2021 and 2022. School year students from K to 12th grade will have to wear masks.
There will be, this is the one warning. There will be no more race-calling, degrading, racism, or discrimination in this boardroom. If we expect change, we have to work together, okay? We have to respect one another, but do it in a process that gets done effectively. There's always a process. So if we want to continue this, public comment... Guys, please. This is the one warning for this board meeting, okay? Next up, we'll have Alex.
Hello. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. My name is Alex. I will not be saying my name or my last name and state of residence because, as you heard, the people behind me have called out where I'm from, where the group behind me are from. You've seen that they are attacking us because of what we said, even though it's all facts about... about, you know, COVID being real. I think it's important as chair and vice chair that you recognize, and you as chair, know, you know, you're a person of color, correct? And so you see the deaths that are happening between the people of color who are dying because of COVID every day, the families, students, teachers, and especially, you know, all the school board members here, know, you know? It's all been said for past many of years that, you know, COVID have been happening, that it's true that people are dying, and it's mostly affecting BIPOC families. I want to say, you know, the fact that we're being treated this way isn't correct. The fact that, you know, we can't even sit here comfortably because people are searching of where we're from. They're out there starting fights when we're literally trying to testify. And I want to remind you, you know, this is off-topic, but it's important that, you know, that we reopen public testimonies and be accessible for all, for families who are working, that is low-income, that are working late especially. But going on towards that, you know, our families are being hurt by COVID. We have people behind us who clearly don't want to listen to what other people have to say and what the effects that are happening. We're being called out for something that we're not only doing, but they are doing as well. You know, it's important, I think it's important that the fact that you as vice chair let the people with no mask allowed to be in without a mask, it's harming a lot of communities. You know, we have families to go home to, so do you, and so do many of the other folks here. So as well as, you know, my peers behind me, and like, my other peer had said, she has families that would be, that would die if they catch COVID. I think it's important that you take that and listen to that and let that sink in. And as well as, you know, we had a different meeting out of the school board with a couple of school board members, and I brought up, y'all have, I brought up, you know, about, you know, us being attacked and the issues that are on the school board. You guys have said like, oh, you, you don't, you need to learn more about it and this and that. But I think it's important as, as a school board member, if I was running for school board, I would look for the differences that what the previous school board have done, you know? The fact that how much they harmed our community.
Thank you, Alex. Appreciate it. Cindy, Rico, and then Luis.
I agree. So like I said last time I was here, the power structure that the Salem Kaiser School District has had for years is a result of white supremacy, and that is a fact. White supremacy, white supremacy seems laced into every single decision that is made here from this board inevitably, and it was definitely present in the decision made in letting people enter this space with no masks and putting everyone in here at risk. As cases rise and more people die, and as different COVID variants begin to exist, if this board couldn't even make the correct and safe decision to protect people and kids and implement social distancing and masks during the school board meeting and the line outside where, you know, grown adults were harassing, taking videos and pictures of minors? How are we supposed to trust you all to make decisions when it comes to implementing, implementing safe decisions in having kids go back to school? Because you're way too comfortable right now having COVID cases on your hands, it seems like. So, you know, people are dying and have been dying. It's simple as that. COVID is real and has been impacting lower-income black and brown communities the most, communities in which some do not have access to healthcare, that do not have the privilege to, you know, own a Benz and, and receive health coverage, that have died systemically, that cannot take the time to come to these meetings because they cannot lose their work hours because they have to make rent and put food on the table. The rising cases are scientific facts. It is not something you can disagree with, but you can do your own research, your own research. So I'll remind the people in the back that Google is free, so I suggest you use it. These are not conspiracy theories like some people behind me and some people on the board believe. During the pandemic, the school board was comfortable in their own homes and having their meetings through Zoom and deciding the fate of kids and their families. But since schools are opening, you all must advocate for educators and students to vaccinate. For new school board members, the time to step up is now, okay? The time to shut down bigotry is now, because there is way too much to lose if you don't.
Thank you, Cindy. Luis?
People, and people in the room, I'd just like to remind you all that this is a public meeting with minors and adults mixed in. Please keep your comments to yourself so we can conduct our business. Again, I've already issued my one warning. If we have to, have to issue another one, this meeting will most likely become to an end without any resolution tonight.
I want to start off this testimony by saying that anti-maskers and anti-vaxers are some of the biggest crybabies, snowflakes, ignoramuses, and sellouts that I have ever seen in my life. And that, right there, that proves it. I also want to say that although we have new candidates on the school board, it's ridiculous how you guys have not built trust with the communities that you are elected to serve. You guys need to prove yourselves, not just through words, but through actions. Outside of this district, you had a sign that said you needed to wear a mask to come in. I don't know how you guys came to the resolution to not wear it, but it's ridiculous. And as well, I'm talking to you. I also want to say that I hope for a future where we can actually see a school board in a school district who can care about us, a superintendent who can care about us, somebody who understands us, our culture, maybe someone who has an education in hip-hop or something like that. I also want to say, Satya, Marty, Bethel, all of you guys should just resign. You know, your time is over. You know, you guys just continue to do harm. We have no faith in you, no trust in you. You guys are just ridiculous. It's ridiculous you guys even being here. And I also want to say, I want to end this off. I know that there is an action, and they're talking about re-electing Paul Decopoulos on the school board as a lawyer. I do not recommend that. I think you guys should do some research about that. Look at the history. Look at how he laughed when Paul Kylo did blackface last year. Look at how he's a tool that's used to silence our freedom of speech, our freedom of assembly, and everything that just goes against us. So do your job, new school board members, you know, that directly applies to you as well, and, you know, enforce not wearing a mask. That's all I got to say.
Martenit Santos?
First and foremost, I'm not going to display my name. Those names I just said are my real names, for the reasons why, because white nationalists and three percenters are present in this room right now. At this moment, our community doesn't trust the Salem School Board because of the actions that has happened in the past, like racist and classist behaviors. One step to gain our trust is to actually listen and value our stories and make a change. And not listen to the people who don't support, like, equity. I'm sure if y'all are going to do that, I'm not sure if y'all are going to do that because the first time I came, y'all shut down BIPOC voices, people of color, Black Indigenous people of color. So you should be true to yourself and listen and take action right after you testify, make a meeting with them, because our community is hurting. Who are my community? It's right there. That's my community. My community is out there struggling in the heat, working every single day while you sitting, sitting on your, sitting on your comfortable spots with air conditioning? My people out there struggling, they struggle in the heat. All that smoke from last year, they were working in that. That's my community. Because of the past school board members, make sure you keep accountable of yourselves for your actions. Learn from us. You know, meetings and stuff like, yeah, we, we could, yeah, we could do that, but we need actions. We can't just be like, be here on the same spot. We need to move on. My community is hurting once again. There's certain people here trying to make like, a really bad agenda. They, they kill my community. They don't care about my community. You know, there's people who look like me, but they're blind who they are. You know? They don't face the reality. My community and my closest families are dying from COVID-19. My ancestors died from a virus, from a virus like COVID-19. Once again, my voice and my peers' voices should be valid and not thrown to wind, thrown away. Once again, my voice and my...
Thank you.
Should be valid and not thrown away.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Time is up. Roberto?
Good afternoon. My name is Tla Soltekan, and I refuse to give my area of residence due to the current presence of white supremacy and white supremacists in this room. I would also like to begin with an Indigenous land acknowledgement. Let us remember why the Indigenous people are not here. As an actual Indigenous person myself, I know that the true history of, you know, of this country is rooted in the fact that Europeans brought disease and spread them purposely over all Indigenous lands and also brought a lot of different things. Now, there's a famous Mark Twain quote that says, "History never repeats," but it also rhymes, but it most importantly rhymes. That exact idea mirrors the current conditions that we have during this pandemic, the same way that it is disproportionately hurting Black Indigenous people of color. Kids are suffering, yes, I would like to address that, but it is because the pandemic continues, and it is because of the anti-maskers and the anti-vaxers and the refusal to actually accept vaccines, which is the reason why we're here today in this current situation. It is because of that constant denial that we have to continue wearing masks and because of those conspiracy theories that many people decide to believe in without actually looking into the real facts. Today, in all of Oregon, according to the Statesman Journal, it has peaked and actually surpassed November 30 numbers, which is one of the worst days in Oregon history for the pandemic, today. And that is due to the fact that there are anti-maskers and anti-vaxers who are not willing, who believe in conspiracy theories, who do not want this state nor its people to progress. Is this how you include community and the community of youth by putting them at risk? Sure, I would like to say it's not a law, just like everyone says, but it's common sense. BIPOC and especially BIPOC youth are the most disproportionately affected by COVID in all of Oregon, and here we are still within this pandemic because we have anti-maskers and acceptance of anti-vaccines. How can you go against your own directives, such as the constant reminder to wear masks on your websites, as well as here, even at the front of the school board, but still let anti-maskers waltz in? What kind of directive is that? What kind of leadership is that? I actually had COVID because an anti-masker at my father's work refused to wear a mask and still chose to go to work. I genuinely suffered all of the consequences, and my mother nearly died when she was hospitalized. Think about that. An Indigenous person hospitalized and almost dying because of an anti-masker and because of anti-vaccines. Let that sink. This is the same danger that we put Korean students in because of the complacency that y'all have. We are no longer asking, nor were we ever asking, we are demanding change.
Gracias. Your time is up. Alex B. Alex B.
So I want to start off by saying that I have a lot on my mind, and beginning coming in today, and I got a lot on my mind when I went to the restroom, I came out, and I overheard a conversation where essentially props was being given to the decision to allow folks into this building. And I'm incredibly disappointed to hear this conversation because a lot of y'all ran on a, on a, on a platform to be unlike the previous school board. But what I saw today was, was, I don't even know how to describe it. It's not, it's not institutional racism. It's, it's, I don't know what it is, but the fact is that we have parents who are farm workers, we have parents who don't have health insurance, who might have cancer because they're exposed to organic phosphates, pesticides in the fields, and they don't know it. But our lives don't matter enough for you guys to make the right decision and protect us? That's where we are today. Everybody in this room, it's a lie to think that there isn't COVID in the air. And the chances are that we're going to take that home, and we're going to expose our parents. So if you ever said Black Lives Matter, or you stand for farm workers, or you stand for undocumented folks, but you allowed this disease in this room, such a small room without ventilation, then I want you to rethink that, because our lives are at risk and our parents are at risk just for speaking up. Not only are we at risk because of a disease, but we're also at risk from being, you know, victims of hate crimes. And also, if you, if you knowingly have a disease, if you, if you spit in someone's face, that's a hate crime. And if you, if you are next to someone and you have COVID, and it's a person of color or an Indigenous person, that itself is also a hate crime. So everybody in this room, we experienced a hate crime today, and it wasn't because it just was an accident. Decisions were made and, what's it called, rules were ignored. So I leave it at that, and I don't know what to say, but this is incredibly disappointing.
Thank you. Tabitha? Is Tabitha here?
Give me a second. Okay, let me start off by saying, American freedom comes at a cost of Black Indigenous and people of color's lives, especially during this pandemic. My name is Tabitha, and that's all I feel comfortable saying due to the white supremacists in the school board and the ignorant people in the audience. Once again, I will say I have no idea how Marty Haynes still has her position in the school board. She's a known white supremacist and has no business working in the school environment where there are many students of different cultures and ethnicities. I am here to remind you of what we spoke about last time. We need to make public testimony more accessible for those who have obstacles in their way. COVID is real. It's not something you can ignore and pretend it doesn't exist. People are actively dying, and there are 113 new cases here in Marion County every single day. More than half of those cases could have been prevented if people took it seriously and wore their masks. If you choose to let students or teachers go to school without masks, I... students or teachers go to school without masks, I assure you the cases will go up and people will continue to die and it will be blood on your hands, blood on every single one of you school members, school board members. Unmasked individuals are choosing to be ignorant and are aiding in the spread of COVID. You have 65 schools. That's over 42,000 students. Let that sink in. Think about how fast COVID would spread in that environment. If you are anti-mask, you are anti-life. It's clear and simple. Knowing that a thing as simple as a mask can save lives and choosing not to wear one when you are, you are actively being a part of the problem instead of the solution. The decision that you made today with allowing these anti-maskers to come into a room was a reckless and dangerous, dangerous decision. You're actively putting our lives at risk. You need to be better. You need to do better. And to the new school board members, except for Maria, I'm talking to you Oswaldo, who allowed this to happen, I'm extremely disappointed in you and you failed us. Allowing students not to wear masks is a direct attack on undocumented students and their families and farm workers who don't have access to healthcare. Not everyone has the privilege to be ignorant and uneducated like the anti-maskers over here. Do better, be better.
We'll have time for one more. Angela Hurtado-Mendoza?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
This good? Okay. Hi, my name's Angela Hurtado-Mendoza. My pronouns are she and they, ella and ella. I'm from West Salem.
Please keep it. What happened?
Transphobia or whatever.
Guys, please, please, we're trying to have a meeting here with provide public testimony. Okay, let's take a break. Chris, can you help out here? Let's take a break. Board members, we're going to take a five, 10-minute break.
And everybody that were, remember, recall the welcoming opening that I provided. This is also a public meeting where we're trying to move this district forward. We're trying to hear comments from all sorts of communities within our school district. A lot of communities that I represent from being bilingual, bicultural and lived experiences. If we can't have harmony in this boardroom, we can't have order in this boardroom, it will shut down the process of providing an opportunity for public testimony. That is not what I want. And I know y'all want to become and work as partners from all sides of the district throughout Salem Kaiser with your school board. So I'd like to remind that please be respectful. Speak to the facts, speak to your emotions, but refrain, try to refrain from calling others names so that we can be effective and efficient within this board. So we'll provide this time for Angela to speak and provide her testimony, and then we'll move on to other business. Angela, when you're ready.
Thank you. I'm gonna start over again. My name's Angela Hurtado-Mendoza. My pronouns are she, they, ella and ella. I'm from West Salem. I graduated from West Salem High School in 2017. And I was going to talk about the mask mandate, but since someone decided to be, you know, transphobic, I think I'm going to talk about my experience at West Salem. I had a hard time because I do identify as non-binary, because I am queer and I am Latina. And that, I had problems with a lot of people. And I didn't ask for any of those problems. I didn't ask to be, you know, who I am. I am this person and I've never been apologetic about that. I just want no one else to experience what I experienced and what I still continue to experience, you know, just even in this public meeting. It's hard, but I want to advocate for all those other kids and someone has to. Now, speaking about the mask mandate, I hope that, you know, you guys do keep it. I do think that, you know, COVID is very real. I've had many family friends die of COVID or be very, very sick because of COVID. I had COVID in December. It was horrible and I would not wish it upon anyone. It's very real. It is very scary. I do agree that children aren't necessarily the driving force of COVID, but they can bring it back home. They can't get their parents sick. And we don't want any more parents out of the workforce. I don't think that's any good for anyone. Sorry, I'm a little rattled. But, you know, I just want everyone to do better. In every case, I wanted you guys to listen to everyone. I do think public commentary should be, you know, unlimited. I think everyone should be able to speak, even those who don't agree with my opinions. I want to hear everyone because I want to create a better tomorrow for everyone, something that everyone is happy with, which probably won't happen, but, I don't know. Sorry, I'm a lot more rattled than I thought.
You're doing great.
But, yeah. Thank you, I guess. Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you. Your, your comments of providing the opportunity for everybody to speak is our, the board's wish as well. Unfortunately, we're going to move on tonight and hopefully we can resume it at a different board meeting. Moving on to section number five, spotlights is still on hiatus. No spotlights, and they are to resume in the fall, in October, but communications is working on them. Now we'll return, we'll turn to Superintendent Perry, Kristi Perry, for her reports.
So just a question. Would it be helpful if I skipped over the summer school reports and put those on to next agenda, since we're still in the middle of summer school, or just want me to go as proceed? I'm just trying to gauge if you want me to try to speed things up a little bit.
I think, I think we can bring it to next. We've heard some great commentary already in the last board meeting, so.
Okay.
Let's just move forward.
All right. So then I'm going to move on to public comment proposal for in-person meetings. And I just want to highlight a couple changes that we've made. I know you heard some more public comment tonight, and I believe the plan is that you'll make a final decision and then we'll get it all posted on the website. So a couple things we heard last time, one is that the, we wanted the school board page to be more accessible. So we have moved the school board to its, what's that? You found it?
I found it right away.
Yep. We moved the school board to its own banner on the website. So that was one thing we heard. So that's been done. The next slide then is just a reminder that we do have closed captions on, that are available on CC Media. So we're going to be really clear about posting that on the agenda. The other, I know there's been some interest also in having an interpreter, sign language interpreter here, and we're still doing some research on that, but closed captions are there. And then the, you can see that we've tried to have the agenda there, sign up for public comment. And then we also, when we closed public comment this time, we had a notice that you could still sign up in the boardroom. So we did change that. And then as a reminder, we do have some access to public comment there in multiple areas. It's on the calendar, the website and on the agenda. So, so multiple places where we're being sure that we share it. And our translations department is good about getting those in multiple languages. Also, as a reminder, people can always email the board. You don't have to, you don't wait for your public comment. They can just go to the board site there, contact the board 24/7. Doesn't have to come in public comment. But the other thing we've come up with is we're going to have buttons on the website for request for translations. So we've had this conversation about, you know, do we have all of our translators show up every time? But we're going to put a button on there that requests for translations or ASL services. And so that then our translators can call and say, do you want to write the board? Do you want to give written public comment? Do you want to give oral public comment? And they can give them assistance. If they want to show up for the meeting to give testimony, then we'll have a interpreter here. So that was our way to give some greater access. And I think that should be up on our website in a couple days. I know that they're in the works. We've had our, somebody out ill. So those are the changes that we've made. I did, I don't know if you had a chance to, but I did walk through the public comment process myself to make sure it was an easy process. I think the one thing we are missing though is that multiple, ability for multiple languages beyond Spanish. We can always do Spanish. We always have our Spanish translations here, but I think that websites or that button's going to help. And then we'll give that really personal service to our families on what can we help you with and how do you want to get to the board. And so I think that will, that will be helpful. As we've had our public engagement sessions, our families have really appreciated that simultaneous translation in multiple languages. So that's been good, but we'll work on that for this, for any family that wants it. So with that, I'm going to move us on to the next, which is our return to school information, unless you have questions about anything on the website or public comment.
I think Alma, I want to say she came in for public comment. She mentioned something about the Monday at 4:00 PM closing. Are we going to talk about, I know people mentioned it before, like the deadline for submitting those. Are we going to do like a separate discussion on that?
I will open it up to you guys as board leadership. Sorry, I went a little too fast.
About moving.
I think it's making it longer, right?
Yeah. Moving now the, closing the comment timeline on Monday at 4 o'clock. What are we going to do to that? There's, there was a lot of comments provided about the public comment process that we're going to take into consideration. Something that we're also working on is trying to get our agenda planning sessions done earlier so that we could open the agenda earlier during the week, given a few more days as well. So that's something that's coming down the pipeline. And we're happy that, hoping that will expand the time for public comment. But including to that same statement by Alma was a few great comments that I took very good note on, and I will be discussing and looking at what we can continue to do to, to expand that.
Yeah, I think it was especially around the sign up for in-person.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Wanting to, and I think there might be some ways to figure that part especially out. So good point, Grace.
Any other question? Yes, Director, Attorney Gary.
Thank you, Chair Avila. In this particular proposal for public comment, I, I just wanted to, it was very painful for me to sit here and watch what was going on. I really want to say that. And I would really ask our Chair Avila to kind of put that as one of the center thing in the website, et cetera. The need for public comments to really be respectful. I'm not saying you shouldn't call me, call me anything. You can call me white supremacist. I don't mind. You can welcome it. But do it, you know, we really worked hard to kind of talk about, you know, civility. We can't be calling each other. When people call me some name, it is hurtful. And I don't think this is the standard we should have for our public schools. You know, for me, it was very difficult to sit here and watch what happened today. I want to be honest. Whether you like it or not, whether people may believe it or not, I'm supposed to be one BIPOC leader and immigrant parent, raised two kids. This is not representative of anybody's culture. It's not my culture. None of our parents' culture is this. So I wish in this, we have to talk about the need for civility, not need for, you know, being respectful, being, there's absolutely nothing we gain today by watching what happened. We worked hard. In the Zoom days, it was difficult. Yet we prevail and it wasn't perfect, I'm telling you. But that is not, this doesn't, it's not representative of any of our 90 streams of culture that we have in our Salem Kaiser. I'm an immigrant. And I can't go back and say, this is the standard I want to see in any one of our communities. I wish there is somewhere we have to put that, the need for. It is within, consistent with our policy. I want our board to know that. It is within the policy. And this cannot be the standard in which we will conduct our board meeting moving forward because I don't know what are we going to, what kind of policy advancement we can gain by what we saw today? Nothing. So please, highlight that and make sure the board meetings are held in an efficient manner. I really think that is an important purpose of our board. So I'm sorry I had to speak, but I just go sit and watch this go on.
Thank you.
Sorry, Chair Avila.
So I just have a question. I really like that you're going to add an opportunity for translation, a button. How do folks who don't read English gain access to that button? So for example, on the state's website, when they are, when they have translated material, they have like a revolving, like a circulating button. Look at Ashley because she shares the state. There's a revolving button with different languages. It says like FAQs and it tells them in their language how to access what you're asking them to access. So how are you going to provide these folks access to that button if they don't know what it says?
Yeah, we'll work on that with our translation team. We haven't gotten that far yet, but that's a really good point. And then as soon as we get, you know, we have that meet the school board and here's, here's how you provide comment, then as soon as this is all locked in, then we'll do it in multiple languages as well. So the public comment process, which won't be this detailed, will be in multiple languages on the website. That's for Sylvia.
Sorry, Sylvia. I mean, you're an American worker.
Any other comments on that?
I mean, I definitely think that our process could use some fine tuning. I definitely agree that we need to work on establishing like decorum, especially whenever I see certain adults just scoffing and making confused faces at minors. So yeah, I think that we should definitely be working on that.
Yes, Grace.
Kind of going off of that, I think too that this is really the only opportunity right now for people to give public comment. So we're going to expect, you know, diverse crowds of different opinions. So I think if we do, you know, later have, we talked about having like zone meet, different meetings of public, or just having separate meetings of different groups of people, that might kind of eliminate some of the arguments. But again, it's public comments. You're going to get all types of views. But maybe that would kind of help keep things flowing and also give people more time to speak.
Thank you. And then we do have Director Guzmán Ortiz online, but give her an opportunity to see if she wants to weigh in.
You know, it was, it's been in, meaningful, I think, a lot of emotions tonight. We know that mask mandates are, or thoughts and ideas about public face coverings are on a spectrum. And I think for me overall, it's just making sure that we are, people are being respectful. We have students and youth coming into these meetings and there should be no tolerance for disrespect, you know, if transphobic comments, gender targeting, identity targeting comments, especially against marginalized communities. So I just, not in the boardroom with y'all today, but I can definitely say that I am feeling lots of emotions myself.
Thank you.
All right. Director McDaniel's is going to come just give you an update on our return to school and our engagement that we've done so far. So she's going to walk through that and kind of what's coming up in the coming weeks.
Okay.
And while you're getting your thoughts together, huge shout out to your team for the amount of work that went in, all the technical work that went in. the amount of work that went in, all the technical work that went into making sure that we were fully accessible to our families.
Thank you. Are you coming to help me?
Yes.
Oh, you're going to have me do that, huh?
Yes.
Alrighty. I'm warning you. Thank you, Chair Avila. Vice Chair Carson, Carson Cunningham. Superintendent Perry, Board of Directors, members of the public. Really quickly, I wanted to share that on the web, we are working very, very hard to translate all languages. That is a commitment of the district. We had made that commitment during cabinet, also on the communications team, to make sure that everything's translated before it goes to the website. So just so you all know. Still working out logistics on public comments, but that is coming. Tonight, we also had written comments. Those will be posted on the board, on the, on the website this evening for those, the summary of written comments. So as you know, we're preparing for back to school. There we go. Returning to five days instruction this fall, academics and.
So, well, I'm trying to get a full presentation mode.
Keep going. You're doing great, Director McDaniel.
Thank you.
I'm like going to cheerlead you now.
Believe me.
He's behind you.
People are saying.
Yeah, it's him.
She's a communications person. She can't even work the, okay. Academics and us, social emotional learning is our highest priority. Safety protocols will be implemented and monitored. Standard services, of course, transportation, health, meals, et cetera. And activities, of course, music and athletics and clubs. Speaking of the website, right now on the front page of the website, and there's an arrow pointing to it, we have back to school information. And here, folks going to the website will be able to find all kinds of information from bell schedules to transportation basics to supplies and some other things. So it's right now live on the website. So when you go there, click on the picture and you'll get the information. Here's our bell schedule. And what I heard from our webmaster is that, is this the bell? Oh, sorry, this is not bell schedule. Is that, is that bell schedule?
No.
It's calendar.
I'm sorry, see. Actually, these are new glasses. Okay, these give the dates for school, first day of school, September 7th. 6th and 9th, okay? And September 8th, first day for, can't see that screen.
Poor Sylvia's got it.
5th, 7th, 8th, 10th and 12th. September 15th, first day of Kinder. Whoop, whoop. Okay. We had our engagement sessions last week, last Wednesday and last Friday. We had a total of about 1,286 attendees. We had 700 last Wednesday and 586 on Friday. And we even had students attend on Friday to ask questions. We had translations there, as you can see the welcome here. We had Spanish language. We had, this is martialis, Tukis, Russian and also Swahili interpreters. We also had ASL there as well. Okay? The panelists included Superintendent Perry and a host of leadership team and also our COVID-19 team was present. And there was a lot of questions, of course, around COVID protocols in the schools. Some of the common themes we heard, first, the questions we did ask for engagement, we asked participants, what were their top three concerns going back to in-person this fall? And also any questions about COVID-19 safety in our schools? Some of the themes that came out was the mask mandate. There was a lot of folks that asked questions about that. They did not agree with that. Some of the attendees wanted to know if Edge registration will still open and Edge is our online digital school. There was questions about that. They also wanted to know about social distancing on the buses. As you all know, it is a federal mandate to have, require a mask on buses right now. And so they wanted to know how we social distance it, socially distance on the buses. There were a lot of concerns about COVID-19 safety in the schools. So our COVID-19 team did a lot of answering questions and did a really great job on that. On Friday, some of our students that came out wanted to know if they were going to have the opportunity to have lockers this year. And I think one of the comments was, well, if they're at North, they're going to get an opportunity to have new lockers. But yes, there will be the use of lockers this year. And then we got some appreciation for Salem Kaiser staff and also the engagement sessions. A lot of people were really happy about that. They said they want more of this interaction with the district. And so we have some great ideas coming up over the school year and how we're going to be doing that. We now have the survey open. Currently, we have 1,327 people that have responded. We launched the survey last Friday. We asked the same questions that we asked during the engagement sessions. And the survey will actually close tomorrow. We do have, just to kind of break down how many people have actually responded, English families, 1,272, Spanish, 51, Russian, three, martialis, one so far. That survey is in multiple languages. When you go to the website, they click on it, their language, and it goes to the survey, which is done in their language as well.
How, can I ask a question on that?
Yes.
How was the community members informed that there's a survey available?
We, we have various channels. We, we mentioned it at the engagement session, but we also send out a text message to every family. That is about the best way that families connect. We send out a text message. We send out a link. They can click on the link in their language and go directly to the survey.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
You want to ask? Well, I just, it was just kind of tangential in sense of like the text messaging because I know that we have, I think, regulations now about being able to message people and making sure that we get their consent beforehand. So just wondering like.
Yeah, you have to opt-in as a parent.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is opt-in.
You opt-in.
Yep. Yep. Good question though. Yeah.
It is a very good question. Thank you. We are in the process of back to school information nights. As you know, we gathered a lot of engagement from our communities. We got some great input. And so the week of the 23rd, we're going to combine elementary and secondary family sessions. We're all going to do a virtual event. We've been looking at trying to do in-person events logistically. Sometimes it's a little tough. But one of the things that's exciting for us is that we've had some communities reach out to us and they want to host a back to school event. They're going to actually host it. We co-host with them. They're inviting us to come. So we're actually working out details right now. More to come on that. I believe the Pacific Islander community is doing one next Saturday at Shemeketa. And they've already invited us and they're just welcoming, welcoming us with open arms. So that's going to be exciting as well. We'll do our normal communications as far as letting people know about these events. We also have community partners. As you know, we have a wonderful community engagement specialist, Jacqueline Benavides, who has just made inroads into the community. And when we did our communications review, people were saying how much they love Jacqueline. So she's been a great addition to our team. We'll get out information through our district outreach team. Many of them will be coming back the week of the 23rd. A lot of them have been out for the summer. So we have our C-SOCS coming back, outreach team coming back. I know we've had some of our interpreters out, like I mean, I remember, I think Arabeck was out as well. So they'll all be back to help out that week. We also have a great relationship with our media partners. And when I say great relationship, we get about six to seven media inquiries daily. We have created great partnerships. And so they are looking for great stories right now. They're looking to get out the information and they always want to interview the superintendent and our assistant superintendent. So more to come on that. If I could mention really quickly, we send out every week a compilation of all of our earned media that we track. So just for the new board members, that is all of our partnerships, all the stories that we do. So when you see that come out once a week, it'll come out, it'll come from our communications coordinator, Jordan Hagedorn. And just so you know, we have done a really great job in getting our name out there in a positive light. So more to come this week on that one. Schools, from my understanding, will also be hosting their own open houses and so more to come on that soon.
As we, let me ask a question. As we're gaining, getting that survey information and the questions, how are you processing that for us?
Right now, Jacqueline and I will be processing that, processing that information. And luckily, it's on Survey Monkey, so it's kind of like, it's pretty much calculated for us, so we don't really have to do much. We have been seeing some of the common themes on there as well, the same as we've seen in the engagement sessions.
And are we going to start putting some FAQs on the website?
We're working on that as well. Thank you for bringing that up, Superintendent. We have posted the engagement sessions. We did record those engagement sessions and so those are posted on the website now. FAQs are coming.
So I just, I'll round out and then I'll open it up for questions if you just want to switch to the. Yeah, that'd be great. So one of, I was thrilled with the outreach and the show, and how parents and families showed up for us. And I want you to know that from us as educational leaders, we are looking forward and going full court press to get kids back in school five days a week and keep them in school. That has to be our highest calling. While there's lots of feelings, I think, about masking or not masking, that's not us. Our job is to follow the guidelines, follow what health and safety experts are telling us. I can't, as the educational leader, think I know, I have better research than what CDC and Oregon Health Authority are telling me. And I did really clearly ask our families to please join us in making this not confrontational. So I did ask for love and care. I did ask for our families to think about impacts to others. And I hope that in unity, you'll, you can help support us just getting back to kids in school. We need them back five days a week. We all know the pandemic and distance learning isn't the best model. We need our kids in our schools. And we do need to show up with care and connection for our students. And it starts with us. So I just want to remind us of that. We'll continue to engage the fam, our families in the coming weeks. I will continue to give those same messages in our community about care and love for our students and that we have to follow safety protocols. We are giving what others are telling us are the, you know, what we need to do for kids. So we'll continue to monitor it. I'll continue to pay attention to what the state is telling us and what the health experts are telling us. I was visiting with one of my contacts at the hospital this week around the number of hospital beds. And I was listening to a report before we jumped in here about what they're predicting for hospital beds and what it will be in the coming weeks. And I think we should all be worried. So with that, though, we will remain focused on getting our kids back and we'll do whatever it takes to get our kids back in school. With that, I think I would like to move us on unless there's other questions. The health and safety protocols, we're rebrewing in our community events. We'll take the questions people are asking us. I noticed from the coalition, they still had a number of questions that I think could help their families know we were showing up safely for our kids. There were lots of questions in those community events about safety and the fear around coming back into large areas and wanting to be sure that there were safety protocols in place. Yes, yes.
So middle schools will not have access to lockers as part of the.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Because that was a really big question that was asked. And I have to tell you, I did actually love that we were asking questions that we used to get asked, like, do I have a locker and when does school start? And that was kind of fun. That was kind of fun. And I think. Awesome. Thank you.
They'll be allowed to carry backpacks?
Yes.
Which a lot of our kids like better.
Are you opening up for questions?
Yeah, I would, we would open up for questions.
Director, Attorney Gary.
No, I just wanted to kind of raise this question of masks. That seems to be in everybody's mind. You know, I've kind of lived through many epidemics back in India as a physician, horrible epidemics. You know, the, the real fight should be between COVID and rest of us. I want to be honest, it's not about fighting amongst us. It should be really between COVID and us. And in that, how can we kind of change the narrative? Because sadly, in the last year or last two years, it has been like people have been pitted against each other in the process that we are forgetting the real enemy is not each of us, but COVID out there. And what are different layers of protection that we can reasonably use? None of those protections are 100% proof, I want you all to know. Even with vaccine, I've got four of them, got infected and one I lost sadly. So that's not 100% proof. It's just a layer of, it's almost like your Swiss cheese. We don't want all the holes lining up and then have a bad outcome. So we have to forget that the real enemy is COVID, not each other. And for the last year, I've been hearing leaders after leaders are just pitting communities against each other sadly. In the process, we are forgetting that we are fighting COVID, not each other. I'm really troubled, not because of the mask or no mask. That's not my problem. I'm a physician. I wear masks. I wear all kinds of things. But the real thing I'm troubled is the way we are going around enacting this public health steps, which troubles me because shaming, blaming and introducing a $500 per day, per occurrence fine is really going to turn each one of us as like spies or snitching agents against each other. That is, by shaming and blaming, you cannot get handle on any public health contagious disease, whether it's HIV or COVID. Same thing other countries tried and gave up. So I really think we should find a way to empower. I really felt it should have been a local decision. We are all kind of people, responsible parents and elected officials. We could have all sat together and say, how do we keep our community, the most vulnerable sections of our community? What are some of the extra things we could have done? That way, we all understand why we are doing what we are doing. And by this, we have missed that opportunity. And I don't know as chair and as board, how can we get back to finding a way to empowering our community, empowering our students and things like that so that we fight the real enemy that's COVID, not each other?
Thank you.
You know, I'm really troubled because the way we are rolling it out is not assuring me. So what are some of the steps you're going to take? If somebody by mistake, the mask goes down, if a person doesn't like the teacher or the teacher doesn't like the student, are we going to start calling up, like, and reporting it? Will that lead to, let's say there's 100 reports. What is it going to do to our budget? All, those are serious problems we have ended up creating. We saw part of it roll out today. So is there any discussion on how this is going to be rolled out? Are the teachers going to be targeted with their license? Are people going to live in perennial fear that their license will be taken away or they can't teach? Or kids are going to go basically snitch against each other? What did we end up creating in the process of fighting the COVID? I don't know. It doesn't look pretty to me. And this is surely not the way to deal with any contagious disease. And we need to really empower people so they can make good decisions and understand why they are making the good decisions rather than a decision with no end in sight. I don't know if there is some discussion on this topic.
Superintendent Chris Perry, is there, is there questions that will be touched upon that?
Yeah, I think what I would say is we have layers of protection. The best thing we can do is stick to our layers of protection. I'm trying to, and I think you saw this from me before the board meeting, I am trying to advocate for layers of protection for the adults as models in this because I think our kids, for the most part, will, they're in summer school right now. They're wearing their masks. They're having breaks. Are we going to have some adults do it the wrong way? Yeah, we are. And we're going to help and fix it. Are we going to have some kids do it the wrong way? Yes, we are. It, it doesn't help us to fight about this issue when we just want to have kids back in school. So I would say if it starts with you as well as me in this, and you saw my own emotions before the meeting around this. So I would ask, how are we going to do this? I'd put it on us. We're dealt the hand we have. We aren't going around trying to beat up teachers. We're not trying to go around beating up kids over things. We're trying to be calm in the face of lots of adversity right now. And it starts with us as the adults that are here.
Thank you. I know we have a lot of things to say about this topic, but I would like to possibly even see if we can side that till we get through these reports. And if the board wishes to engage in a discussion regarding this, the questions that Dr., Director Shandigiri has brought up, if I think we can move forward, and then I'll bring it back up.
All right. So the next report is on our, I've lost my place now, Board Results Policy and Key Performance Indicator. And I've, I asked Dr. West to be here tonight as our, one of our, our strategic initiatives person. Other duties is assigned as well. And I want to start with, and I know Ethan's working on the slides there, but I want to start and point to the results policy. Because I, we are, have been in this place for so long. I think we've lost sight of what are the key performance metrics we're going to measure? What should our North Star be in how we lead our kids? So I'm going to continue to bring you back to this until we can get some clarity on what, on, if there's something you want. So first of all, your adult, your adults, your results policy is horribly outdated. This is your policy. It is yours at some point to update. And we can help you. We can guide you. We're making recommendations of what we think it should be at some point. But you got to kind of land on where we want to head. Last year, we moved, let's see, and I think it was like June of 2017. And you have outdated dates in your policy. Nobody's fault. This is not a shame or blame. This is just where we are at this moment, and especially with COVID and not having the, the assessment metrics that were the same. So last year, we shared with you, they're having lots of good luck there on the screen. It's going great. Last year, we shared with you a number of key performance metrics. And we even put key performance metrics along the bottom of our strategic plan. So those were our key performance metrics pre-COVID. Then we got into COVID, and we tried to do some reporting to you on key performance metrics. And now we're here as kids enter back to school. So some of the, this is an awesome night for technology, isn't it? There it is. There it is. So with that, I'm going to turn it to Dr. West to share with you our recommendations around key performance metrics, what we are putting at the bottom of our strategic plan. We have expanded it beyond just academic measures because we've heard that over and over again, that it's got to be more than just academics. So with that, Dr. West, I'm going to turn it over to you to share that. And this is part one. We can have 10 parts to this discussion or five parts to this discussion. This is part one tonight.
Can you make that bigger?
Yeah, this one, yeah, this one is just to flash up your results policy. We're not even going to go over that. Next slides are bigger. Yeah. So there you go.
Control plus maybe?
If you can speak Spanish, if you can read Spanish, Marty.
Thank you, Superintendent Perry, Chair Avia, Directors. Nice to see you tonight. What I'm going to do is walk you through how we came to our KPIs and the recommendations for what we think we need to monitor during this upcoming school year based on the strategic goals that we've set for ourselves. So what you see on the screen here is our strategic plan. It is similar to what you see on the wall behind you, but slightly different. And I will point out a couple of the differences. One of the main differences is that we've updated the leadership strategic goal to explicitly call out that we want our leaders to interrupt systems of impression. And then we've also updated our key performance indicators, which I'm going to spend the majority of my time talking about.
And can I, I just want to interrupt. The leadership goal, we changed last year, and we reported it to the board. Dr. Sprouls reported that one to the board last year.
Thank you. But I do want to center us, before we get to our KPIs, on the purpose for the strategic plan, which is to achieve equitable student outcomes. So we believe that these goals and then the measurements that we're going to talk about over the next few minutes will help us to actually achieve and then evaluate our progress towards equitable student outcomes. That's something that we can't say we've achieved yet, but it's very important to us. And that's what the strategic plan is built around to help us actually do for our students. So our KPIs, key performance indicators down here at the bottom, these are different than what you've seen on the signs behind you and around the district. We updated them actually during the pandemic because many of the KPIs, the measurements that we had traditionally relied on, we weren't able to access. For example, we had traditionally relied on state assessment scores. State assessments were postponed. They were actually eliminated for the period of time, spring 2020 during the emergency closure period. And then again, for spring 2019, sorry, spring 2019, the emergency closure period. And then spring 2020, when we would traditionally do those tests, the state assessments were eliminated. Nope, I'm wrong again.
It's COVID time.
Thank you. Yeah, it's only been 100 years, it feels like. So because we don't have access to those state assessment measures, we had, we had to update our KPIs. There were some other measures as well that we traditionally would have had access to that we weren't able to administer in the way that we normally would. Easy CBM is a good example of that. Normally, those are administered in a classroom environment where teachers are able to proctor assessments. We had to learn how to do that online. So we gave ourselves a little bit of a buffer period to figure out how are we actually going to measure these things that we say are still really important to us. And through that pandemic period, we landed on some new KPIs that I'll go over here in just, just a minute. So starting with an equity, diversity, and inclusion measurement, which I'll share with you what we'll actually be looking at here. We've talked before about social emotional supports. So you've heard us talk about sense of belonging. That's a really important measurement for us. And it is a key performance indicator. Care and connection was critical last year, and it is one of the things that helped many, many students in our system be successful. Through that effort, we learned that it's something that we need to continue to elevate and monitor and actually work towards. And then we have measurements for elementary success, middle school success, high school success. And then finally, through engaging with our community-based organizations over the last few years, we've learned that that partnership is really valuable, not only to us as an organization, but most importantly, to our students. So we want to evaluate our effectiveness at engaging and partnering with our community-based organizations in service to our students.
Can I interrupt and ask you to tell about how we're handling the request for proposals with our community-based org, just the first meeting you had? It's just such an example of how we're trying to show up differently.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. So we, we actually recently engaged with several of our community-based organizations. We called them together into a video conference. And we, we asked them a few questions. One of the questions we asked them is really basic. What are you doing right now to support our students? Where are you finding success in our community? And where do you feel like you need some additional support to continue those efforts? And we asked that question because we didn't go in assuming that we knew everything that our community-based organizations are doing. We had some idea, but we really needed them to tell us and to, to be open and transparent about what's working for them and what has been hard during the pandemic. Then we shared with them a little bit of our own internal data in terms of what we've seen over the last year and the areas that we anticipate students will need some extra support. And asked our community-based organizations if they had already considered ramping up for that and if they have things in place right now to prepare for students as they reengage when the school year starts. So those are examples of the questions that we conversed around and gathered some input around to then craft our RFPs, our requests for proposals. You know, when we last talked about this, we thought we had a really good idea for what we wanted to do with our RFPs. And after talking to our community-based organizations, what we realized is that they can actually provide a lot more than we thought originally. So we expanded the terms of the RFPs, which should be out probably in a week or so, so that our, more of our community-based organizations could actually take advantage of that.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question, Chair?
Yes.
This, you invited certain CBOs to give you an input. What if a small community does not have a CBO? How will that person or that little community know what you've learned? And if so, how, what is the process for transparency of how you're going to be, what you have learned, and it will be made available to, say, a small community? I'm just making up a community, A, that has never done this technical grant writing before or they don't have an established, except they have a tax ID.
So it's a small community organization with a tax ID that may not have responded to a request for proposal before?
Or they may not even have a track record of doing something, yet their children need something. So is this available on the website or is it transparently available so that others can also say, gee, my community can also benefit?
It will be. So the, the process for our RFPs in our district, and I believe this is similar for all state and public entities, is that once a request for proposal is determined, there is a public website that people can go to. They click a link. They have to have an account, but it's free to set up an account. And then anyone who feels like they can meet the terms of the proposal can submit their own proposal for us to evaluate. So that's publicly available. It's available linked through our website. I think it's called Ebid is the actual site that folks would go to. What we do is we send out the information when it's available to the organizations that we have worked with traditionally or that have expressed an interest. So for example, all of the CBOs that we engaged with on the video call, we committed to them. We'll let you know when the link's available. And they committed to us, several of them, and they know others who would benefit from knowing that. So some, some of it's through word of mouth that people learn about this. Otherwise, it's through engaging directly through the website. Does that answer your question?
Is it shown somewhere in your school district website so that anybody can know or the newspapers can know this is where they announce it? What are the criteria? Normally, when federal government or state government announces a request for RFP, it's made transparent and available?
It's, it's transparent. Anyone can access it.
Is it easily available that anybody can say, this is where it is? These are the topics you're looking for?
I'm going to interrupt because I got us off track and I apologize. So I apologize, Dr. Shandigiri, because I got us off track. We will put that in writing to you of how it's accessible, which we made the promise to. I was just trying to give one little example of how we're trying to show up differently for our communities. So my fault. I apologize.
Yeah, no worries. Thank you, Superintendent Perry. So getting back to our KPIs specifically, these are the different measures that we intend to look at throughout the school year. And I'm not going to go through this in exhaustive manner, but I do want to touch on some of these so that you understand the type of data that we will be looking at. Some of these data are available to us through our student information system. So for example, when we talk about equity, diversity, and inclusion, we, we've been talking for the last year about disproportionality in our discipline data. We think that's something that we need to monitor closely. Those data are available to us through our student information system. So we'll pull those data on a regular basis to evaluate how we're doing. Same thing is true as well with grade distribution. So grade distribution is also really important to us. We know that grades actually are highly correlated to success in high school, our middle school math grades, for example. We also know that the grades that are earned as a ninth grade student are highly correlated to eventual graduation. So we know that we need to monitor grades, and we can get those through our student information system. Some other systems that we'll be looking at to monitor these different KPIs include what are known as benchmarks. And those are assessments that we do on a regular basis. It's type of dipstick. It's a screener for us to assess our kids progressing at the way that they should be. And Easy CBM is one of those screeners that we use. I Ready is another method that we use to evaluate how students are progressing. Easy CBM is our literacy measure. I Ready is our math measure. So we'll be using those. Panorama helps us assess our SCL data. So we'll be accessing that twice a year is when we do our panorama survey. And then there's some information that's a little more difficult to actually put together. And we're still building the systems for how to do that. Specifically, if you look here with community engagement, we are now tracking, thanks to our communications department, our different community engagement sessions. So we'll have those data readily, readily available. What we don't have readily available yet, but we think that we need to monitor, is from those engagement sessions, are we actually responding to what we're hearing to the community? And what does that response look like as it manifests itself within our school system? So we're working out how we're going to monitor that. We know it's important to do so, but we don't quite have that system in place yet. So this gives you an overview of what we plan to track throughout the school year. All of these data come to us at different points of the school year, and I'll get to that in just a minute. The other thing that we wanted to evaluate as we were looking at our KPIs and our strategic plan is the answer to this question. Are we putting our money where our mouth is? So we, we say that these things are important to us. We say, for example, that ninth grade on track is really important to us. We, we want students to have a successful ninth grade year. So are we investing in that? And we went through an analysis process where we looked at the ways we were leveraging different grants. And you saw this document previously about a month ago. This document right here gives you a brief overview of the different grants that we have access to and whether they are state or federal grants. So we did a quick analysis to see, are we actually utilizing our monies to support our strategic efforts? And we are. We're actually leveraging our resources quite well towards these strategic goals. An example of that is at the secondary level for the different initiatives and strategies that we're supporting just through our grants, not including what we put forth in the general fund. We're spending about $41.3 million per year just on those strategies. At the elementary level, it's closer to $44 million per year. So we are doing a pretty good job of aligning our strategies with our resources. What we think is important is that throughout the school year, we need to come back to this body and internally among ourselves, make sure that we're actually measuring the impacts of the things that we're doing. sure that we're actually measuring the impacts of the things that we're doing. So, starting in October, we will share KPI data as it becomes available. Again, it's not all available all the time, so it will come to you in parts, but we'll share it when we have it. By year end, we'll make sure that every single one of our KPIs has been presented to you. This is the schedule that we intend to follow. And I want to point out just one quick thing here in the schedule that you'll see. If you look, for example, at our sense of belonging, you'll see that we put up there that that will be an annual report. And the reason for that is we only do sense of belonging twice a year. So, we'll get a baseline in September. What really matters to us is from that baseline, have we improved? So, we'll come back to you when we have that improvement measure to show you how our efforts have actually played out in our school environments. What questions may I answer for you?
Just-
Well, what if they don't improve? And when do we become a part of the conversation of applying efforts to help improve? And also on the discipline, is that the discipline data that we have been receiving monthly for a while?
Yeah, we put in there specifically exclusionary discipline data and to disaggregate that by student group. So, the discipline data that's been coming in your report is much broader than just exclusionary discipline data.
Right. So, are you, is this stating that you're no longer going to provide it to us monthly? You're only going to do it twice a year?
This is our, the data report is one that the board requested.
Mm-hmm.
So, that is up to the board. If you want to still receive that monthly, that's up to the board. This is our attempt to try to get you to look at monitoring things from that-
Is this your presentation to us?
Yes.
Not just our observation of it?
Yep.
Got it?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And to answer your prior question, which I think is a really good question, the reason that we measure things is to figure out if our efforts are working. And at some point, if they're not, we need to change what we're doing. In education, and you know this from working with people, efforts sometimes take time. We don't necessarily immediately see the outcomes that we're looking for, but there does come a point in time where if what we're doing isn't working, we need to acknowledge that and change our strategy.
But will we be a part of that strategy, I think is what I'm asking?
The board directly?
Yeah, because I think it's important that the community and the board understand what you're doing and what is and what isn't working and what you're doing to shift to try something different. Because I think that I get stuck in this concept of it's all you doing the work, but these are our kids. This is a community-wide effort. It should be community-wide impact and strategy to really make sure our kids are healthy, whole, and learning well. And that way, it doesn't all fall on you guys constantly because there might be efforts in the community that could change, if noted, to help improve education and healthy outcomes in schools.
Yeah. So, this may answer your question. One of the things that we'll be engaging in in the coming year is what we call our ORIS process. It's actually a process that was outlined by the state of Oregon. And it's a good process. It requires engagement with many different stakeholders. The original strategic plan was developed based on that ORIS process. So, the stakeholders are not just internal to Salem Kaiser. It's not just staff we're meeting with. It's staff. It's our CBOs. It's our parent groups. It's our different PACs that we have access to on a regular basis. We now have the SIA advisory team, which is another group that we often go to with questions. So, that is a process that we'll be engaging in again this year with the express purpose of taking a look at our strategic plan and making sure that what we think we need to be focusing on is actually what we should be focusing on. And that's a lengthy process. It will take us a good part of the year to get through it because there's different engagement sessions. There's data that we look at. We'll probably invite some ODE stakeholders to that process as well this year. Does, is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, I mean, I understand what you're saying. I think I just, I think that the district does a really good job of focusing on particular areas. And there's a large swath of parents and families and students that don't ever get brought to the table. It's always, they show up if there's an issue. And, I mean, if things are working great, fine, but how do we improve things that, to make them better from that current status? And that larger swath of people, they don't get to participate because they don't fall in a categorization of risk. And I really want to see this district really take a whole district approach. And if we're talking about every student matters and we're going to work for all students, though, I think we really have to apply that. And I think that requires more work and more effort on all of our parts to make sure everybody has access. I mean, this isn't a dig. I didn't know about that survey until today. And I opted into the text messages and I get the emails. And maybe I missed it because we get a lot of different things, but it didn't stand out to me. And, you know, I'm blessed now to not be an at-risk parent or population, so I'm not targeted with that constant touch. So, I get brushed over often to have feedback and participation in my own children's education. And I want to be able to figure out how we can really put our arms around everybody and have this education work for everybody and their classrooms work for everybody. So...
I appreciate what you're saying. And that's something that we need to get better at. We've talked about that before, that engaging deeply with our community is something that we do want to improve. So, I appreciate that comment. Thank you.
Dr. West, Chair. You know, I really appreciate this, but just to give a background to the new board members and our leadership, you know, even though you'll be monitoring and sharing with us twice a year for discipline, we have been hearing our children who have been coming and some of the families have been coming for 25 years. And finally, we reached a point that every month, we'll have a monthly report of expulsion, suspension, and school-related arrests and these issues. I know you're saying if the entire board wants, then we will have it, because that was also giving a real time. We don't want the problem to become a bigger problem and then, in a reactive manner, address it. So, is this, I would really ask our board to please understand the background, why we asked for a monthly report, so that we can also read and understand what is going on with the trend. Because Salem Kaiser School District, 24J, had one of the highest expulsion, suspension in the state out of 197 school districts. So, we really want to get to, we don't want it to become a big problem, yet I don't want to overlook the cry of the students who have been coming year after year and saying. So, that was the background which really led to looking into that and a monthly report. So, could we continue to have that in addition to twice a year? Otherwise, we are going to miss it.
Yeah.
We don't want to go back to that state again.
I think this is a presentation. I think this might be a discussion later if it is for the board to take up, receiving this type of monthly report when we know, in fact, for the history of having a disproportionate level of expulsions and discipline among minorities, students of color, especially Black, African-American, Latinx, Indigenous youth. What I want to see is more important to me is more about student success. I want to see why our students are not enrolled in AB and IB classes. I want to see why they're not enrolled in Inspire programs and participating in that and type of leadership opportunities and why we're failing in providing an opportunity for our students to get in those positions. Yes, it is important to the safe and, the safety of our students in these disciplines, but I don't think, and if it's going to be a discussion or a vote or action that we take upon later to receive this type of information on a monthly basis, I don't really feel it's going to be the most adequate. But I do want to see some action taken that those numbers are decreased from restorative justice practices that the district is implementing. That's kind of where I'm headed and thinking as an educator and the gaps that we're missing. Because if our students are participating in these activities and these courses where they're being challenged, providing those opportunities, obviously, it's going to decrease disciplinary actions.
Yep.
Yes, Grace.
I just want to make a comment. You mentioned social and emotional support and CBOs. I think it would be cool if we had, like, on the website, we had a, like, a link or something. You know, up at the top, how we have the big tabs. We had one for, like, mental health specifically. We might already have one, but, I mean, I don't check the website all the time, so I don't know. Because right now, you know, with every session I attend, it's, you know, people want counselors. We want mentors. We want that extra support. So, if we could work with CBOs by chance and, like, find outreach-free counseling-free, and I know there's people out there, and just kind of have those listed and those contact lists so that kids can just reach out directly. Because right now, I know, like, we have an ID and it's just like hotline crisis. And that's like, we don't need, we need preventative measures. So, if we could just have a good tab or something like that.
Yeah, that's a great idea. In fact, Grace, I just recently learned that we do have that page on our website, and I didn't even know it.
Yeah. It gets hidden in there or something.
Right, right. So, that's a, that's a great idea.
Replace the scoreboard of them.
Yeah, that, we need to call that out in some other way. And we do have a lot of partnerships with mental health providers.
Yeah, I know we have them. I just need it, like, somewhere big so people can see.
People can access it. Yep, 100% agree.
Yeah.
Thank you for that suggestion. So, again, these, right now, are proposed times to come back to you, just to put out there. Just because this says twice a year for a measure, for example, doesn't mean that we wouldn't necessarily look at it more frequently. So, to the points that have been made in this boardroom, discipline data, we're going to look at all the time. Grades are monitored all the time. So, we have data teams. We have ninth grade success teams. We have 100% teams and 20% teams in our schools that are regularly monitoring data. What we're proposing is that what we bring in terms of board reports is this frequency. If you'd like more than that, then-
Okay.
-you know, we can work on that. And Superintendent Perry is your conduit for that. So, these KPIs, as I've already said, related to our strategic plan. We think if we monitor these things, we'll know if we're actually being successful in executing the strategies that we think will make a difference for kids and help us achieve equitable student outcomes. And that leads us back to our results policy.
So, I want to go, can you go back to the slide that says, I'm just listening to what Isvaldo said, and I'm thinking about that whole high school success piece, but I just want, so, anyway, I heard what you said. I'm looking at our high school success piece, and I'm wondering how we're really elevating advancement, you know, those college credit opportunities. And you'll hear some of that when we, when we meet at Shemecada as well for some of that. So, I know that's on my mind.
Yeah. Starts in, I think it would start in middle school.
Yes, yep.
So-
So, back to the results policy. At some point, we need to get back to this. At some point, we need to figure out how we help this board and boards moving forward. What are the right things to monitor? When should we monitor? Because this is your guiding light around policy governance.
Director Chindigiri?
Chair Abila, I think both can be measured. What I'm understanding is the exclusionary discipline is a very foundational thing. It's very important for my children and our children. So, that, I'm thinking it pertains to the school climate, which makes a child feel safe to show up in school and things. We also have to have some measures on the academic achievement as well. So, it's not like one or the other. So, I mean, you know, I would like to see both because the exclusionary discipline is also a civil rights data collection subset. So, any way we are measuring it, could we, I mean, could, this KPI could very well become eventually our board goals in terms of measurable outcomes for each of them. So, in other words, something we can think of as a board, saying, could this become a board goal? So that it really piggybacks and there's a good alignment between the district's effort and what we can talk about as a board goal. That essentially aligns with what the community has been asking. We want our children to feel safe and we want our children to do well in school academically as well. So, I hope we can keep both rather than one or the other.
Director Hyatt?
I'm sure you all had dinner before our five o'clock meeting, but maybe some of you didn't with respect. It's almost 9:30 and personally, I'm getting kind of tired and all the data is turning my brain into mush. So, is there anything we can postpone? I mean, I do have something I want to remind people of that's very important at the end, but can we postpone any of this so we can go home?
I feel like it'll be fast if we can just get to it.
If, is this the end of the-
Yep.
-the report? How fast do you guys think we can, this action item number seven would take, just to kind of get a sense?
Yeah, I don't think anything on the agenda could take you any time. It will really matter about how long you discuss it. So, it's-
If we can get through action item number seven, I think we can suspend everything else if that's okay.
Could we just do the consent calendar too? Because that's a quick one, seven and eight.
Let's wrap this up in the next, because I didn't eat dinner either. So, just try to wrap this up quickly. So, item number seven.
All right. Action item number seven is a reappointment of legal counsel. You have a board plate in there and you have the background and the contract. There was an increase in the hourly rate and the retainer amount. And we've also added Rebecca Jacobson to the contract as another lawyer that will be the lead attorney for the district as, you know, Paul's absent or anything. So, you have another person to interact with. With that all, I think you could entertain a motion that we could do questions.
I move the motion.
You'll take the motion?
As presented.
I second it.
Okay. So, the motion has passed. I'll ask for a discussion. And Dr. Chindigiri, any, any words?
I would like to support as presented.
Thank you.
We are very pleased with Mr. Dacopoulos. You know, he helped us last year through an extraordinarily unprecedented time. I personally felt like I was flying a plane without pilot license, and he helped me literally make sure I don't go to jail or don't break a law. And in school systems, having a good attorney who understands the education system is absolutely critical because it's a little different from campaigning. Eventually, we come up with policy. We just want to make sure that how do we negotiate? And these are very complex issues, to be honest. I want to be really front. And it wasn't easy. Not all the time I agreed with Mr. Dacopoulos. Sometimes I disobeyed him, to be honest, on the public record. But the reality is that kind of back and forth discussion, I felt safe. I felt comfortable. I learned a lot. And you're going to see the same advantage. So, I fully support. I haven't worked with Ms. Rebecca Jacobson, but Mr. Dacopoulos was a fine attorney and he helped me and vice versa.
Director Hyatt, any comments?
No, I'm just waiting to pull something.
And Director Naus Pressey?
Nope. Just looking forward to continue working with Mr. Teakopoulos.
Director Guzman Ortiz, any, any comments?
No comments on this.
Director Bethel?
None.
Director Carson Conahan?
None, ready to vote.
Okay. So, let's take, let's take a vote. Our Director Carson Conahan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Bethel?
Aye.
Director Hyatt?
Aye.
Director Chindigiri?
Aye.
Director Guzman Ortiz?
Aye.
And Director Naus Pressey?
Aye.
And Chair Abila, aye. With that, there's no objections. Let the record show that all directors voted for the motion with a majority, and the motion carries.
I'd like to thank board members for their confidence in me and my law firm.
Thank you. Let's move on to action item number eight. Yes, Director?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull eight B, please, from the consent calendar.
Then I move to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item B.
Can I second that?
Is there any motion, are there any objections to the motion?
Yes.
Let the record show, Director Carson Conahan, objects to the motion?
I would like to pull a separate one. I don't know.
Oh. You're going to pull A?
I'm going to pull the buses item. I don't, I can't language.
Yeah, just A.
So, it's just A?
Aye.
So, you're not really objecting to mine. You're adding your own.
Okay.
Well, I'm objecting to-
The motion to move-
Oh, to do everything but B. Okay, I got it.
So, where am I right now?
So, you're going to consider each separate?
Okay, so-
So, just start with A.
So, let's start, go back to A-
So let's start, go back to eight A and go in order. Director Carson Cunningham?
Thank you, Chair Avila. I just had a really great conversation with some youth a couple of weeks ago and they asked about sort of our ideas and plans around climate change in the district and how we may be able to apply, you know, a new lens to how we're making decisions. And so when I saw this item on the consent agenda, it made me wonder, you know, since we're replacing these diesel buses, is there an opportunity to replace with something more environmentally conscious? Obviously, we're already going to replace the diesel, which is a step in the right direction, but an opportunity to purchase more electric buses or hybrid, that type of thing. And so I would love a little more information from the district around those plans. I also was able to talk with some of our school bus drivers this weekend down at Hoopla and I want to give them a shout out. They're recruiting. We need a lot of school bus drivers. We're down many, many. And so one of them did talk to me about what we're doing around our very first electric bus, which I'm very excited about. The infrastructure's going in. But just wanted to give a shout out to our school bus drivers and put the plug out there that we need more and ask the question of Mike, potentially, on, on what our plans are for those bus replacements. Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, Mike, can you provide us with an update or maybe a short report on that?
Not tonight?
Not tonight.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I, I certainly can.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You're going to say?
No, I was just, I was going to let him answer, but David, good job.
So move on to consent B.
Oh, you got to take. Need to take a motion, yeah.
We could do all together if we just talk about B for a minute, if you want.
Well, I think we have to do each one. Doesn't matter? And?
I don't object, just looking.
Okay, let's do it.
For the third month in a row, I'm just looking at the, uh, large number, what looks to me like a large number of resignations. And I'm still hoping to hear, you know, why, you know, is this a normal number or is it more than normal? And why are these people leaving? And that's just my request. And after that, I make a motion that we approve the consent calendar in full.
Second motion.
Second motion. Do I hear any objections? None? No discussion?
No.
Well, I have a question, actually, because I think we asked John at one point to give us some feedback through surveys, exit surveys. I think it was last month, actually, we talked about exit surveys. Not everybody participates, but some do. What's that data look like? How do we, how do we see that?
I think you did see it, but it wasn't in a public session. He can bring it to a public session. He had it all on a slide for you because it was related to another topic, but it can be in public and I don't, you know, I don't know.
Was that last month?
Well, actually, I, what I recall was data. I didn't, I did not ever receive information as to, like, why people were resigning, what they were doing. I saw numbers, for sure, but I, we were, I was interested in, like, more specifically why they're leaving. And in the conversation in that executive session, we'd had other.
Yeah, I do recall it was related to an exit survey. So if we can, John, same thing, same as I asked Michael, if we can get another short brief presentation. I know you've alluded to having a, a, an exit survey that's probably not completed as of a high percentage, is what I recall. But I also request that if there, you can update that with how many of our classified staff members go into licensure programs within the district.
Yeah, it might be good to request a work session on the topic of hiring, grow your, our grow your own programs, hiring practices, recruitment, you know, kind of all in one. I think that might be the way to handle it.
I would love to see that, Director Hyatt.
Yeah, I don't believe I saw that data. I was on the phone, maybe, for that executive session. So I have not seen the information yet.
If we can request to have that in a work session, that would be wonderful. Director Bethel, would that be okay with you?
Absolutely.
All right. Any other discussion?
Comment?
Yes?
I guess just to add, something I like to hear is kind of like our onboarding practice for new hires and how we, like, bring them on board and inform about, like, you know, their insurance options and benefits and all that. Thank you.
Any other discussions? To my left? None? Okay, so, um, how does everybody vote, right? Director Hyatt?
Aye.
Director Chindigiri?
Aye.
Director Noz Pressi?
Aye.
Director Guzman Ortiz?
Aye.
Director Bethel?
Aye.
Director Carson Cunningham?
Aye.
Chair Avila, aye. Let the record show, all ayes. Motion passes. So we'll table, um, section nine, 10, 11, and 12, oh, 11, to the next meeting.
You're all stuck here forever.
Chair, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So this was the first reading of safe and welcoming schools. So will this be, the first reading of safe and welcoming school will be in the next meeting? Or, because typically, we, I believe in September, we typically vote on safe and welcoming. So.
Done at the first meeting in September.
Maybe I'm wrong, I don't know.
So, sorry, I was getting too.
Oh, sorry. Typically, we go in September or so, we do the, we vote on safe and welcoming school.
Yeah, the goal was, we wanted it in the packet for public comment, which you heard some tonight. And then the goal would be that you'd take action at the first meeting in September because that's the beginning of the school year. So that, that would be the place to do that, and that was the plan.
So next meeting, we will not have a first reading, but we'll be just doing the voting as an action item, correct?
Correct.
So.
Unless you change your mind at your meeting.
I think we're, I think we're going to agree with that.
Okay.
I would like to point out that our next board meeting is a work session, August 24th, 2021, and it's tentatively scheduled to be held at Shemeketa Community College's new ag complex. And Alice, was CCTV, were they a go or have they completed their, they haven't completed that? So we're pending on CCTV's ability to be able to, to livestream. I hope we can make it happen and, and we'll provide an update to meet at the new ag complex.
And you're also going to get a written report that's all but finished. It's fairly lengthy, so we're going to get it to you ahead of time. We'll post it ahead of time because in the meeting itself, we're not going to go over the written report. We're going to have some presentations about the different programs.
All right, well, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Oh, no?
Usually, we board members get to share a little, and I have a couple of things that are important.
Oh, I thought you wanted to go.
I do, but these are so important that I didn't leave early.
Okay. Uh, go ahead.
I will talk quickly. So first, back in June, I'd asked for a work session in September. September is disaster preparedness month. It's not if, it's when. There's a 9.0 earthquake off the Oregon coast and how prepared are we? I would like to, as, you know, we are responsible for the well-being of our students. As a board member, I would like to know certain things, like, what are the teachers supposed to do if the earthquake happens during the day and what are their responsibilities? What's on hand for kids to use bathrooms and stuff? They won't be able to be inside their buildings, et cetera. So what I was asking for was a work session and also to invite the city emergency manager, Gregory Walsh, to do a presentation on what we can expect after the earthquake to make sure as we are as prepared as we can be to protect our kids. And then the, the second item is, let's not forget, you probably know, the previous board voted to not change to zone voting, but we did promise the community that we would start looking at how we elect directors and probably ought to also redraw our zone boundaries as soon as we get the census data, which I think we're supposed to get next month. And so I just wanted to remind leadership that this is very important to the community. And, you know, I gave my word and I want to make sure that we do get this done well before the next election. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. You read my mind on the zone, uh, the zone voting that is on my mind to present or bring it up closer to October, November. So thank you. Director Noz Pressi?
I just wanted to say that Oregon census data should be available to us by August 12th, so two more days. How exciting. And I'm.
We know this. That's awesome.
Oh, um, the place that I work for participated in making sure that everyone filled out their census, so I'm very in tune with that. And then also, maybe just a shameless plug for, we do have a transit company that has gotten money for an electric bus fleet that maybe our district could collaborate with in terms of obtaining bus passes.
Oh, you're going to be joining the transit committee then?
Yep.
Thank you for that. Director Chindigiri?
Well, I just wanted to say thank you for allowing me to join one of your engagements, Superintendent Perry and Ms. McDaniel. I really appreciate allowing me to join. So it was a good experience for me to be there. And that's pretty much, I'll keep it simple.
Thank you. Director Bethel?
I got nothing.
Uh, Grace? You got nothing? Getting ready for school?
Yeah. You want a locker.
Director Carson Cunningham?
I want a locker.
Thank you. I also just wanted to say I had the opportunity to sit in on one of the community engagement sessions that Superintendent Perry and her staff put together and it was just really well done. I really appreciated the focus on inclusivity, the multiple languages, being translated simultaneously, having ASL interpreter on the screen. And I really just want to say I appreciated the focus on caring about our entire community and us sort of leading by example. You know, I've worked for many years on behalf of older adults and disadvantaged populations, vulnerable children, vulnerable elders. And so I want to make sure that, you know, we're leading, caring for those multi-generational households. And I feel like when we make a decision to mask up, we're considering every single person in our community. I totally believe in accommodation for kids with disabilities, people with disabilities in general. So if a mask is really truly, you know, harmful to someone or is exacerbating a mental health issue or is creating a problem for a person or a child with disabilities, I just want to reiterate that we have a process for parents to go through to seek an accommodation. But really, the, the move towards protecting the whole community with a layered approach, I think, is so important. I think we're really lucky right now that we're not seeing a huge uptick in kids getting COVID or kids dying from COVID. I'm concerned about what the future may hold if we don't get this under control. And so it's with that lens that I hope we're thinking through protecting everyone from cradle to grave. And I just appreciate the district leading on this and for the board's willingness to sit and, and listen to all the perspectives we heard tonight. I agree that it's hard, but I do think it's our job now to hear all those diverse perspectives and try to lead with respect and accountability. And I'll keep listening and I just, I think we're doing the right thing by hearing from everyone. But I do think we need to focus on protecting our community by wearing masks. Thank you.
Thank you. And Grace?
I'm sorry. I did remember, I sat in an equity group, a little meeting, a week ago, and then also a community meeting. And one of the things students wanted to talk about again was school discipline, you know, coming back into school, the removal of SROs. They want to have those engagement groups again. They want to talk to the officials and the officers. They want to get back into that. I think it kind of just got left off, but getting back into restorative justice and all that.
Thank you.
Yes, follow-up to, about kind of exactly what you heard and what students are looking for, and we'll get those started. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you for sharing all that. And there's a lot of topics that we didn't get to touch upon tonight and I don't want to end the meeting and with, without the ability of anybody to have any type of input. So I'll call the meeting to adjourn.